Good evening everybody, welcome to the meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee. I'll hand over to Abbie for housekeeping.
Thank you Chair. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted, however, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to be recorded. Thank you.
Right, I'll ask each member to introduce themselves. My name's Alan Woodcock, I'm a councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward and I'm chairing this meeting. Brian?
It's Brian Holmshire, Green councillor for Broome Hill and Shalavale Ward.
Mike?
Hello. I'm Mike Chaplin, I'm Labour councillor for Southey Ward.
Tony?
I'm Tony Downs and I'm councillor for Southey Ward.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm Tony Downing, councillor for Mosborough Ward.
Nicky?
Nicky Bishara, councillor, Labour councillor for Netheridge and Shalavale Ward.
Roger?
Roger Davidson, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Barbara?
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Cliff?
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Thank you. Abbie do we have apologies?
Thank you Chair. We've had apologies for absence from councillor Diane Hurst and councillor Tony Downing is substituting. We've also had apologies from councillors Peter Price, Bob McCann and Gary Wetherall.
Thank you Abbie. No actually public interest? Right, declarations of interest?
I'm not exactly sure where the right moment is to say this, but I've got a point of order on the agenda. I speak.
This is the time for declarations of interest? If it relates to a declaration of interest, then it wouldn't be, but obviously you could ask the Chair's permission to speak now if you wish.
Yeah, I'll let you speak. Right, thank you. This is in relation to item 220617, which I and a number of other people are requesting is removed from the agenda. That's 220617, formerly 11208512. Now, the objectors last time to this, in this application, the previous application, had not been told that there was a second application that was coming to committee. Neither have the councillors. Now, it's used to happen each time that previous objectors were informed. I want to know why this has not happened this time. Surely the application should be withdrawn to allow local residents and councillors the opportunity to speak if they wish. To my knowledge, in addition, there's been no consultation with councillors or with residents on this application. They haven't been informed about the changes, or when they requested that they track the application, that has not occurred, on the planning website, or when the planning committee were due to meet. So it's local councillors and local residents who have an interest in this. I don't think that's good enough. There is a lack of speakers able to come to this meeting because the information was only received by them yesterday. I ask that be withdrawn until meaning consultation takes place.
Thank you Brian, I'm going to ask Lucy to go back to your role.
Chair, this application was submitted probably about six months ago and neighbours were notified by letter on the 18th of May, it is covered in the supplementary report. Councillors Douglas Johnson and Ruth Mercer were notified on the 16th of May via the weekly list and councillor Phipps wasn't notified in that manner because he'd only just become a councillor and it was around the time of the AGM, but he was clearly aware of it because he submitted an objection on the 9th of June. I think perhaps what the councillor is referring to is that we didn't re-notify neighbours of amendments during the course of the application, so it isn't correct to say that we didn't notify residents of the application, we certainly did, because as you can see, there's a substantial number of objections being received. The reason we didn't re-notify is that we don't re-notify when it's a minor amendment that is a slight improvement. We would re-notify had the proposals been a worsening of the situation, but they weren't. There were some minor adjustments that were a minor improvement on the current situation. So we knew that all the previous objections would stand in any event and that's why we've covered them extensively in the report on that particular case. Residents and councillors can track applications and just to make it clear, the website where you enter your comments clearly says that officers will not inform you when it is going to committee. It's just not possible, given the amount of correspondence that we deal with on a daily basis, the number of applications that we have in, the number of representations, it's not possible for us to be in direct contact with residents, so it is for them to find out when it's on committee and it does say that on the website. So there's nothing procedurally, as far as I can see it, whether legal services want to make a comment, but from my perspective, that's what happened in this case.
Thank you Lucy, do you have anything to say, Vicky? Please.
Thank you Chair. It seems to me that the member here, although I've used the word withdraw, I think what would be better described as perhaps almost a proposal to defer the matter, I would suggest that, as Lucy said, that there is reference to this issue in the supplementary. I would suggest it would be reasonable to carry on with the meeting and when this item comes forward, then if anybody wants to propose a deferral for this reason, then that can be considered at that point. Thank you.
Thank you Vicky. Declarations of interest please. I am declaring a declaration to the Mowbury Bakery, which is 22/02586-LBC. I will not chair this part of that meeting. I will be speaking against my, well, as a ward councillor, that's the only reason I'm declaring. Thank you. Minutes of previous meeting? Page one?
What?
Page nine, sorry. Ten? Eleven? Twelve? Thirteen? Can I have a proposal to accept those please in a second there? Barbara? I've got an answer from Brian. Only failure, yep, yep. Site visits will be entered into members' diaries. So we now have item seven on the agenda, which is page 15, which is pre-preservation order on Broom Grove Road Sheffield S10. So I'll pass that over to Vanessa please, thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeking confirmation of TPO 451, which protects four trees at two Broom Grove Road. The TPO was made on the 23rd of June to protect four lime trees and one horse chestnut. However, the order was varied on 27th of October to remove one of the lime trees which had sustained root damage as a result of excavation work. So the order we are seeking confirmation for therefore protects three lime trees and one horse chestnut and you can see a copy of the varied order at appendix A, although I believe it might not have come through as appendix A, it might have been attached as a supplementary document. The trees are positioned to the north of the site, adjacent to Clark House Road, as such they're very visible, they form a prominent part of the street scene along a busy main thoroughfare. You can see images of the trees at appendix D. They're located within the Broom Hall Conservation Area, so they're already protected to a limited extent and the trees have been implicated in several planning applications which concern the conversion of the former offices at number two Broom Grove Road into a residential dwelling. Initially, the homeowner signaled their intention to remove the trees to make good the boundary wall, which is in poor repair, citing the trees as a contributory factor. A landscape officer within the council expressed concern over the potential loss of the trees and having made their own assessment, they felt that the wall was deteriorating due to age and poor construction, as opposed to the presence of the trees pushing at the wall, so they requested I inspect the trees to assess their suitability for a tree preservation order. I did so on the 24th of November, a copy of the tempo can be seen at appendix B. The trees were scored with 15 points, producing a clear recommendation for protection, so it was deemed expedient in the interests of immunity to make an order. Immediately after this, the applicant stated their intention to retain the trees and replace the wall, so the TPO process was paused pending receipt of detailed plans, which have since been submitted, but which have undergone several iterations following advice from planning officers and I believe is currently pending decision. Although it was indicated by the applicant that the trees were to be retained, on 23rd of June, it was deemed expedient in the interests of immunity to make the TPO, which followed from a desire to ensure the trees were fully considered during any subsequent works of the walls and due to concerns around ongoing damage to the trees as a result of construction spoil being repeatedly piled in their rooting area. The immunity to the trees was also further compromised following excessive pruning, which was pursuant to a section 211 notice, in which the specified recommendation was exceeded by the tree surgeon. One objection was received on the 13th of July from a solicitor acting on behalf of the owner of two Broom Grove Road. The author objected to the protection of T5 based on its condition, its roots having been severed during construction work to number four Broom Grove Road. And as a result of that objection, we have removed the TPO, the tree from the TPO, we varied the order. With regards immunity, the trees are in reasonable condition, as I've said, they're very visible along a very busy road that goes into the town. The trees have an estimated 20 to 40 years retention span, so they'll provide good immunity to the local area for many years to come. And the trees are considered as contributing to the character of the Broom Hall Conservation Area and an appraisal of the conservation area can be found at appendix E. It notes that trees are an essential part of the area's identity, given the area a distinctly silvering character. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. Members, any questions? Any comments? Can we go to a vote please? Brian?
I agree with the officer's recommendation on this. Thank you.
Mike?
For the recommendation.
Tony?
For the recommendation.
Tony?
For the officer's recommendation.
Nicky?
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation.
Barbara?
For the recommendation.
Cliff?
For the recommendation Chair.
That's passed, thank you. Item eight, pre-preservation order number 45841 St Andrews Road, Netheredge. Again, thank you Vanessa.
Thank you. So I'm seeking confirmation of tree preservation order number 458, which was made on the 28th of July to protect a pine tree, which stands within the front garden of 41 St Andrews Road and a copy of the order can be seen attached in appendix A. The tree's within the Netheredge Conservation Area and it was subject to a section 211 notice received on the 17th of June. The notice stated the intended removal of the tree due to its implication in cracking and lifting to the driveway to which it's directly adjacent. In response to the section 211 notice, tree service manager Gerry Gunton inspected the tree on the 28th of July with a view to determining whether the removal of the tree was appropriate. He found that the tree is healthy, it's got no major outward defects barring the loss of its central leader, but this had occurred some years previously, cause unknown, and is now being replaced by upward growth of other lateral branches. He observed that the drive near the base of the tree is cracked and lifting, but there was no indication that further investigative work had taken place, such as lifting of the broken slabs, to ascertain how close the roots are to the surface of the drive and therefore whether the drive can be made good with the tree in situ. It's therefore possible that an engineering solution exists which would see the drive repaired and the tree retained. A tempo assessment was conducted on 28th of July, the tree scored 15 points, producing a clear recommendation for protection and you can see a summary of the tempo at appendix B. No duly made objections have been received with regards to the TPO. With regards to immunity, the tree has high public visibility, standing directly adjacent to St Andrews Road, which is a main road in and out of the Netheredge area. You can see an image of the tree, or images of the tree at appendix C. The tree appears in reasonable condition, again, an estimated 20 to 40 years retention span and an appraisal of the Netheredge Conservation Area included in appendix D states that trees are noted as being a definitive feature of the area, with garden trees forming a perfect foil to the layout of formal houses. As such, the tree can be considered as contributing to the character of the conservation area. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. Do we have any members' questions? Comments? Mark, go to the vote, Brian please?
Yes, I agree with the officer's recommendation in this case.
Mike?
For the recommendation.
Tony?
For the recommendation Chair.
Tony?
For the recommendation Chair.
Nicky?
For the recommendation.
Roger?
Recommendation Chair.
Barbara?
For the recommendation Chair.
Cliff?
For the recommendation Chair.
That's passed, thank you Vanessa. We have six applications to hear today and the first one is item 9A on the agenda, one A application number 22/03144-FUL, 27 Black Brook Drive Sheffield S10 LS. Lucy? Thank you.
Chair, thank you. The reason this application is before members today is because the level of objections and comments that have been received, so that's the reason for the trigger. If you just move to the first slide, so this is 27 Black Brook Drive, so that's the slide that shows the outline of the site. If you just move to the next slide, this one shows an aerial view of the street and a lot of the objections are in relation to the alteration to the roof form, because what's proposed is a hip to gable roof extension, a flat roof dormer to the left-hand side, the east side of the roof. And then the proposals were amended during the course of the application to include a canopy across the front door and the ground floor windows. And this is quite similar to alterations that have already been carried out to numbers 23, 31, 30 and 38 and obviously members went on the site visit to have a look at this. If you just move on to the next shot, this shows the front of the application property just for those of you that weren't able to go on the site visit and the next couple of shots show the rear. Now, there's an extension being constructed at the moment at the back of the property and that was approved under the larger house extension prior notification procedure, so it's not part of this application that you're dealing with today. So really, today's application is about the hip to gable roof extension and the canopy at the front and obviously this is to create space in the roof. If you move to the next slide, this is an example of where similar changes have happened very close to the site, so where I mentioned numbers 23, 31, 30 and 38. So those are just photographs showing very similar extensions that have taken place elsewhere. If you move on to the next slide, this is just an aerial shot which again illustrates a couple of those, which are 27 Black Brook Drive is in the centre and then not the immediate properties, but the ones either side beyond that have both had similar proposals done to their roofs. And then if you move on to the next slide, so this is the proposal, so as you can see, that would form a gable at the front, that's the top left with the canopy over the front door and the windows on the ground floor. There's been quite a lot of comments about the side dormer as well, that has been reduced in scale since it was originally presented to us and also moved to the back of the roof slope, so you would barely see it when driving along the street in particular, the other houses as you approach would obscure the view of the dormer window. And just to note that the windows that are in the dormer both serve bathroom accommodation, so they would both be obscure glazed. So Chair, whilst there have been multiple objections to the proposal, I think some of that may perhaps date back to when there was another application which proposed an additional full story on top of this dwelling and that was rejected by us and it was rejected by the planning inspector as well. So this is a much more modest proposal, similar to other proposals on the street and in planning terms, we see no reason to not be recommending approval for this proposal on that basis. So I think I'll leave it at that because we see it as a fairly simple application Chair.
Thank you Lucy. Members' questions? Members' comments? Roger?
Yeah. It would be very difficult to refuse this on planning grounds, as the officer has pointed out and those of us who went on the site visit yesterday will realise that these houses are very similar, the proposal is very similar to the existing set out of many of the houses on that road, that particular road. They're not all uniform, but they're very characteristic of the kind of development that we see put forward here. So on those grounds, I can't see any planning reason to turn this down.
Thank you Roger. Mike?
Chair, thank you. Like my fellow councillor, Roger Davidson, I've also went on the site visit yesterday and was able to see the street seen for myself. If this was the only application for this kind of development and all the other houses were, as this one now is, I could see an argument, but given that several homes in the streets have already had this kind of extension put in, I can't see any planning grounds to refuse it Chair.
Thank you Mike. Anyone else? Can we go to the vote please? Brian?
Yes, in this case I agree with the officer's recommendation.
Mike?
For the recommendation Chair.
Tony?
For the recommendation Chair.
Tony?
For the recommendation Chair.
Nicky?
For the recommendation.
Roger?
For the recommendation.
Barbara?
For the recommendation Chair.
Cliff?
For the recommendation Chair.
That's passed, thank you. Right, the next one is Mowry Bakery, which I'm thinking of. Can I have a proposal for someone to act as Chair please? Barbara?
Can I propose councillor Mike Chaplin, because I believe he's chaired similar committees in the past, if that's acceptable to you?
Thank you councillor Barbara Masters. I'd be happy to do that.
Can I have a second there please? Right, I'm going to repeat Mike.
So with the agenda item 9B, full planning application, case number 22025854, which was formerly PP11367743. The proposal is to demolish outbuildings and use a former bakery café, and that's use class E, as a dwelling house, use class C, with associated alterations to the fenestration and landscaping, the resubmission of 21/032924. The location is the Mowry Bakery at St Mary's Lane Ecclesfield, S359YE and I believe Lucy is going to take us through the presentation.
Chair, with your permission, the report will be a joint one with item 9C, which is the listed building consent application which goes with the application, is that okay with you Chair?
Yes.
Chair, and just to remind members, you will vote on them separately at the end, but the report is listed on the full application, but it is a joint report with the listed building one. Just in terms of supplementary information Chair, I'll do that first, that's supplementary report number one. We've had an additional representation since the publication of the committee report and this comments on the amended plans that were submitted to revise the fenestration details. It doesn't raise any new comments beyond those which are already included within the committee report and which we've already commented on. We also received a petition against the closure of the business with 240 signatures, but the council's petition scheme procedure states that petitions must state the subject of the petition, what action the petitioners want the council to take, the contact and address details of the organiser, together with names, addresses and signatures of people supporting the petition. The petition doesn't incorporate any full addresses, therefore it can't be considered as a formal petition or representation on the applications, but obviously it's a representation, you know, a representation of the feeling about the applications Chair. So Chair, if we just look at the red line plan that's on the screen, you can see where the location of the building is and if we move on to the aerial shot there. Chair, it's a grade two listed, single storey building, it's probably worth going on to the photographs actually, so that's the photograph that presents to St Mary's Lane. And then the next one shows the building as it presents to St Mary's Close. And then perhaps if we quickly go on to the next shot, so part of the reason for the listing is the crook frame within the interior, so that's why we've shown interior shots there. And then if you move on to the next slide, this is showing the existing and the proposed elevation, so we'll leave it on that slide for now. So the building is in the Ecclesfield Conservation Area and it's attached to the neighbouring residential property. It has a small garden yard area to the rear west of the building and the building is currently used as a café and bakery without buildings that I understand are used in connection with a dog grooming business. So it's proposed to change the use of the building to a dwelling and to carry out a series of alterations to facilitate this, including removing the inappropriate containers. If you just go back to the photograph, I think it was the first photograph, the one before that, that, sorry, that one there, you can see there's a green container there, there's a number of containers in the rear area there, so they currently detract from the setting of the building. So there have been multiple objections which we can completely understand and a lot of those objections are in relation to the loss of the businesses that are there. Now, in terms of the café business, it's not regarded as a designated community facility from a planning perspective, although we completely sympathise with the business that's in the property at the moment. Obviously, it's clear that there's huge community support for it. Even if it was designated as a community facility in planning terms, the site is only 75 metres from a convenience store, it's 230 metres from a café and it's 350 metres from a local shopping centre with a range of facilities within it. So there appears to be no planning reason to resist the proposal purely on that basis, although clearly the loss of a valued business is always regrettable. Ultimately, it's for the landowner, they have control over what happens to the building in this particular case, so regardless of the planning position, the landowner could choose to do something, you know, to ask the business to leave for example. So that's just to put that in con- you know, to ask the business to leave, for example. So that's just to put that in context, although obviously there's a lot of empathy for the businesses in the premises at the moment. From a listed building perspective, the importance of the building largely derives from the crook frame, so if you want to just move to that photograph backwards, it is that one, yes, and the purlins, and also the stone walling on the outside. And also, it does have proximity and visual relationship to the former file management ring at 11 High Street, which you'll be able, I think number 11 is picked up on the plan that's on page 66. You'll be able to see number 11, which is to the south-east and setback from the highway there. The building has been much altered externally in the past, and there have been some inappropriate additions made to it, especially to the St Mary's Lane frontage. So some sympathetic alterations are proposed to rectify that. So if we go back to the previous slide, which shows the proposals as they are now and as they will be. So this includes removing the roller shutter and its housing from that main road frontage. Internally, it's proposed to expose the crooks and insert some new partitions, but they would be cited to not abut the crooks as far as possible. And obviously, those works would be removable in the future as well. Externally, the inappropriate outbuildings would be cleared from the back garden yard area. So in terms of, purely in terms of listed building and conservation area status, the changes would enhance the building and its setting. No car parking is proposed within the curtilage, because this would compromise the setting of the building. But we consider that trip generation is likely to be reduced in comparison with a business use, so that isn't a reason in itself to resist the proposal. It's also in a very sustainable location with numerous bus services. Whilst some comments have been made about the level of light and outlook at the new dwelling, we accept that there will be some compromise in that sense, because in large part, there are some small openings that would provide the light into the building, but the main living space will have a large window. That will be the window that fronts the main road. So overall, we consider that the living conditions will be adequate. And I think what members also need to bear in mind is that this is in a housing policy area, so housing is the preferred use in housing policy areas. In reaching a conclusion on the scheme, the benefits really are the enhancement to the appearance of the, the appearance and the setting of the listed building and the conservation area. Obviously, there's a provision of an additional housing unit at a time when we have got a shortage of supply, but that is only a minor consideration, because it's only one unit, so we accept that that is a minor consideration in this case. The dis-benefits are the lack of an on-site parking space, but as I described earlier, we just think that in traffic generation terms, the traffic generation would be less anyway. There is some compromise on the amenity of the property that's to be provided, and also, obviously, there's the loss of the business, but as I explained before, that isn't, in planning terms, strictly a community facility. There are other facilities close by. So it's our view that the benefits, in this case, do outweigh the dis-benefits, particularly in heritage terms. And whilst we clearly have an enormous sympathy for the current business, we think in planning terms, that there really isn't a reason to resist the proposal, Chair. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. We have three speakers this afternoon, and if I remember correctly, you have three minutes each to speak, five minutes. So I'm going to call Vicky Athorn first to come to the table, where you'll be able to speak.
Do you just want to press the button?
Yeah, tap the button to the right. Yep, and you have five minutes.
Okay. So I live, I live next door, so if you bring up the building, you can see my house next door. So there, I'm adjoined to it there. The crook beams go straight across the shop, right into my house, through the three different doors into my house, above and the ground floor. So there's a structural worry to me. This is pre-medieval, so it's an old building that's not really been, the structure's not really been affected before. The groundwork, you know, the drainage, I've been told it's probably pot drainage, because it's old, so that could affect mine. The back of the garden looks directly on, the back of the property, if you look at the rear elevation, goes, looks directly onto my garden. There's a window in there that's not even on the planning, so that would affect my privacy. I've got right-of-way, but that's a legal thing, so I'll still get right-of-way, but it's not mentioned on any of the planning. The parking, although you said there's a bus service, so people don't need cars, people will have cars, there's no parking on that cul-de-sac. The road that you can see is for access only and no parking. It's a cul-de-sac, small cul-de-sac with no turn, so they have to reverse into there to turn round. Emergency services, vans, everything, so that needs to be clear. If somebody moved into that house, they would park outside. So that's that. The heritage, there's a big heritage following that go to the church, and they come in there, and they've got all the photographs up, and it's part of the heritage of Ecclesfield. I'm disabled, so I do need to be parked outside my house, which at the moment isn't an issue, but there's only two houses, that was one building, there were two houses, and we both park our cars outside the house. The other newer properties round there have got a drive-in, and this park outside, so there's absolutely no parking. I don't understand why a building can be changed to residential without any parking. I know there's a bus service, but as we know, people wouldn't use the bus to catch the bus to the car or get rid of the cars. So that's, but structurally, and the drainage system is my issue. Archaeologists have got to go in, if they find something, then my house has got to be dug up. I can't understand why they've had planning and revised planning, and still the window on the back of the building into my garden has never been raised, and that's a privacy issue for me, surely. The police hub are there, they visit every two weeks, everybody knows they're there. They were open all through Covid, and I know you say it's a shame because it's the business, but there's businesses, and you know, they've all, there's still businesses around there. But their service, the old people's home, the sheltered housing, there is other businesses, but that business will take food, they'll take their Sunday dinners to them, they do their buffets for them, they've relied on it all through this pandemic, they've kept open, they've never closed. It's an open warm pub for everyone. It's in the conservation area, although our houses that are attached aren't listed, they've something that's called Houses of Interest or something, so they're still, you know, they're still got some interest. I think that's it. But my main thing is what affects my building and why the window. If you bring up the rear elevation on there, there's no window. The next one, oh yeah, there, the second one down, the rear elevation, they've just put a door. From that door is my garden, there's no window showing. So how could that be missed? If they can miss that, what other mistakes have they made? And the front of the building, now it's a shop, doesn't look very attractive, but the landlord said he was going to redo this.
Is there anything else you want to add?
Oh, my last thing. If there's a shortage of housing, there was a house at the bottom of the road that was a house, and that's just been changed into a shop. So why can't they say that there's a need for a house, when that shop that's just from here to there has just been turned into a shop?
Thank you very much. When we've had all three speakers, the officer will address them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would Kirsty Foster like to come to the microphone? Press the button on your right.
Yeah. There seems to be a lack of empathy for this building. Sheffield City Council highlighted that the surrounding area is a townscape merit. Now, the bakery is a stone building, built from pre-1700 with medieval origins. This and the four crook barns is an important part of Ecclesfield heritage. We've groups that cycle to see this every summer, and they bring people from out of town to this. It won't be visible for them, it won't be visible for anybody to see if you take this away. Also, round the back, we have brick walls that are from the 17 before. Now, the police have the pop-up, that is where all the community can come and speak to the police in confidence, because they can't get down to the police station, it's too far away, and there's not a bus route to it. Surrounding neighbours, they've all put in objections, and it feels, they feel as if their opinions not count, it's not been taken into consideration. There's been a lot of objections, and it's not about the business, it's about the building. We've had over 2,000 signatures and over 50 comments put down online, and these are valid points about the building, not the business. We're actually, it states that we're, it's been ticked that we're 20 metres away from a water source, it's not, it's actually 18 metres away. And the applicant has stated falsely that there's only one employee, there's five employees there, and we've not had the archaeologist out. He said the archaeologist was coming this summer, it's not been out. The Jewish community, the people that actually own the land, they have no idea what's been going on, and it's, if you look, the applicant has made a lot of false allegation for his own gain. Now, that comes under the Fraud Act 2006, because he has knowingly known about the employees, the water and the Jewish community. The housing targets looking further after Policy CS22, or CS32, putting pressure on the number of unemployment in Ecclesfield. Then, there's the Policy CS248.12, with a significant amount of recreational value that the community could produce. A house has been turned into a business recently, stating there is enough housing in Ecclesfield. The council stated then 2021 that if a business serves a community, the usage should not be changed. You can tell how important this is to our small community by the amount of objections and signatures that have been put in. We survived the epidemic, we need to survive this now. It's people's livelihoods, it's not just a business or a building. People from the surrounding areas come. We deliver food to them, we take over stuff, we even go for their shopping during the epidemic, because they were unable to get it themselves. It's a little community hub that needs to be looked into. And that's about it. All the objections have actually been read, they make the valid point, because there is over 50 of them. And it is just a little hub for the community. People come to have drinks. Now, seeing that there's a convenience store down the hill, that doesn't, there's a nursing home, there's the housing for over 60s, they can't just walk down there. They can pick up the phone, call us, and we'll run over, we'll even go down to shop for them. We're just there to serve the community. So that's my finish. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kirsty. I'm going to call councillor Alan Woodcock to the microphone.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to reiterate a lot of what the previous speakers have said. This is a heritage building within a conservation area, that at present, the business owner allows anyone to go in to look at the crooks and everything else within that building. If this becomes a residential building, that will be lost to the public. The public will not be able to go in to see, whereas at present they can. I believe it's a community hub. Again, the business owner allows people to go in for a warm. Obviously, we're in the cost of living crisis at the moment, so people can go in for a warm, they don't need to buy, they can just go in for a warm. I can't say any more on the planning issues. The only thing I would like to say on that is that if the committee passed this, I'd like a condition that the business continues until such time as all of the external conditions imposed by planning are complied with. I have no further. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Alan. Lucy, would you like to respond? There are a number of points raised, weren't there, around the, how the beams connect into the neighbouring property of Mrs Athorn's home? The window overlooking, is there anything can be done about that? There's the issue about parking, the petition with 2,000 signatures, the, what appears to be a lack of an archaeological survey, concerns about the nearby water course, and of course, the current community use of this, of this building.
Chair, yes, I took a note of what people had said, so I'll try and go through them. In terms of the archaeological recording, you'll see that Condition Number Three, in both cases, on both the full and the listed building application, requires a full written scheme of investigation. So that would be, that's what's called a true precedent, pre-compliment condition. So no other work would be able to start on site at all until that was fulfilled. And part of the reason for that is to make a full and proper record of the building, and also, in future cases, to allow that information to be disseminated to a public place, so it would have to be in an archive that everybody could access. So that is covered by Condition Three in both cases. In terms of some of the specific structural issues that were mentioned, obviously, we don't, the planning service doesn't deal specifically with structural issues, so that is a building control matter. So obviously, any works to convert this property into a dwelling also require building regulations approval. So I'm just mindful that it is a different regime that would deal specifically with that, and they also would deal with the drainage. The lady mentioned the old pot drainage, for example. So those issues would be tackled at the building regulations stage. In terms of the window at the rear, obviously, you can see that the building partly abuts the garden to the next-door property. What we're interested in is the proposed rear elevation, and so that only, the proposed rear elevation has a single door which will be glazed on the rear, but that doesn't look over that garden, so that would be looking over the garden to the building itself. So that's the part we're interested in. I take your point that it's not shown on the existing rear elevation, but it's the proposed rear elevation that we're most interested in, in terms of the impact, the future impact, if you like. Could I just ask Mark to comment on the, more broadly, on the parking issues that were raised, and then I'll move on to some of the other points that were also mentioned by other speakers?
Yes, Chair. In highways, we just took the view that the scale of the development is so small, any parking demand can be accommodated locally. The two speakers mentioned that the newer housing... The two speakers mentioned that the newer housing in that locality have drives and off-street parking. The first speaker parks on the street and we feel that the existing business probably generates a parking demand during the working day where people manage to find parking spaces. So if this was refused on parking grounds and creating a hazard as a consequence of that, I don't think it would withstand scrutiny if it did go to an appeal. So that was the view we took.
Thank you Mark. Lucy, do you want to continue?
Thank you Chair, so I think moving on to the second speaker who obviously talked a lot about the community aspects of the, of the business, which I completely understand and empathise with, but obviously the planning system is dealing with land use considerations. So that's the important first point to note and this, this site does fall within a housing area. In terms of, sorry, I'm just looking at what the other responses were. I think a lot of those were in relation to the community hub and the number of objections which obviously we've covered substantially. There were some issues that were raised that were non-planning issues in terms of allegations that may or may not have been made. So that, that, those are obviously not planning consideration. In terms of the public not being able to go and see the building once it is changed into a, into a dwelling, if it is changed into a dwelling, so not being able to see the interior. I understand that but we can't force these sort of buildings to be made into public buildings. You have to think of the heritage concerns in, in the round and actually the removal of some inappropriate additions, including the outbuildings and so on in, in the rear area, we think have an overall benefit to heritage and, and part of the archaeological programme of works would be to fully record the building, to make sure it's obviously fully photographed as well and to make sure there's a permanent record of the building that would be in an archive for anybody to go and view. You know, I do understand the points that are being made but there isn't anything that we could do in a planning sense to force a requirement to be open to the public. In terms of, I think councillor Woodcock in the end also talked about whether if the committee passed it, could a condition be attached to say that the business should continue until such time as the works were started to convert the building. Obviously, that's not something that's in the planning remit, so that isn't something that you would be able to insist on. I think that covers the main issues that were, that were covered Chair.
Thank you Lucy, there was just the, I mean, members have the paperwork in front of them but the, the public may not be aware but just the, the position of the petition that came, came to us that was, whether that has any merit, planning merit.
Chair, I think that as, as we've covered in the, in the supplementary report, we received a petition after the agenda had been published but because it doesn't have a lead petitioner's name and because the addresses of the people that have signed the petition are not there, there is a postcode but there isn't an actual address. The council says that those sort of petitions can't be accepted as true petitions but what I was saying to members was that obviously it, it shows the strength of feeling about the proposals but I think those are quite well documented in the, the individual representations that have been submitted as well, as well Chair.
Thank you Lucy. I'm now going to put it out to, to members for questions. We'll start with councillor Tony Downing then.
Thank you Chair, I did have concern and I still have slight concern about the parking issues that was, was, was raised but take notice to what the, the officer has said on that one. I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the, one of the objections, one of, sorry, one of the speakers mentioned she's concerned about her property with the, I don't know whether it's about the crux structure in the, in the building that we're talking about but how would that affect her building? Obviously, there were no, so I would imagine when this was built, this, this with the crux thing, there were no such things as planning regulations in those days. But I just, I'm just concerned about the, the lady's point about how it's going to affect her property. Thank you Chair.
Cut myself off then, Lucy, do you want to respond?
Chair, yes, I mean, as I say, the structural issues per se are dealt with under the building regulations stage. So if something receives planning permission, that isn't the end of the road. They still need building regulations approval to convert to residential but we've also applied a series of conditions in terms of the roof structure and how the eventual details are implemented. So we've, on both the listed, well, on the listed building one in particular because it's the internal arrangements which aren't governed, governed by the planning commission. So we've, we've put a number of conditions on to make sure that we have the full details of how the, any new structure interacts with the old roof structure as well.
Thank you Chair. Just to reassure members in order, because my eyes went that way from left to right, I'll have Nigat next then Roger then Barbara then Cliff and I, and then I'll come back to you Brian. Nigat.
Thank you. I think Tony's raised one of my concerns but my other biggest concern is, I think when it was mentioned about the, it's a loss of a business but having, you know, this huge community support and then the petition as well with, I think it says over 100 signatures. I know it's already mentioned it's not had the appropriate way of presenting it. But my biggest concern is this community asset which is mentioned by the speakers, the value of it. And I've seen that within my roles as a community development worker, how much this has a value to the local residents who actually use the space even though it might have other convenience stores as you mentioned. But my concern is, you know, that impact, I know we have to have these dwellings and find spaces but I'm feeling here and reading this and hearing from people is that it's going to have a huge impact on that community. And somebody mentioned it's been used with a variety of ways during the Covid. I've seen how small businesses have actually opened up their doors and within the, within the community, there is another community. So I'm, I'm quite concerned about that loss of community aspect and the social hope because we all are aware the impact of many things that have on our mental health as well and I've seen and worked with people as well how certain community assets have actually been their livelihood and has had a huge impact on their health and wellbeing. So that's just a concern and I'm already hearing that.
Lucy, would you like to respond?
Chair, as I said, we've got huge empathy certainly with the community aspect of, of the business but obviously this is a planning committee and it's not for the planning system to protect individual businesses. That's the difficulty that you faced with in a, in a decision like this. So it's not listed as a community asset. So in planning terms, we don't think that's a reason to resist the proposal but we have full empathy with, with the considerations that have been raised in front of this committee. But I think you have to remember that planning is a land use consideration. So we just don't think that that really can carry much weight in your decision making. I don't know whether legal services want to add anything to, to that.
Thank you Chair, I would agree with Lucy on that point. Obviously, we do have items about community facilities in, in the local plans and also in the MPPI but as Lucy said, it is not currently listed as an ACV and I think the report, and Lucy's already mentioned the other facilities in the area as well. Thank you Chair.
Thank, thank you. I'll call on now to Roger.
Thank you Chair, on page 72 of the report, you talk about the replacement of existing doors, replacement of rendering and the infilling of existing doors and insertion of timber windows. Now, one of the things that we all know is that heritage is very important, I think that we all agree with that. And the, the, the culture of a place is often defined by its buildings. We've lost quite a lot over the years in Sheffield. Now, in replacing these doors and these windows, what sort of doors and windows are you proposing to put on a, a building that predates 1700? Sorry.
Lucy, do you want to answer that one?
Chair, the elevations are shown behind you on the screen and in, in the screen there. So that shows the proposed front elevation, so a very simple joinery basically. The external appearance of the building has been altered a lot. So, so actually the listing is more about the crook frames on the interior than it is on the exterior but the idea is that there'd be very simple interventions and, and quite small as well as you can, as you can see from that. So the full details of them are controlled by condition. So conservation officers would be involved in the final details of the, of the proposed windows and doors. But very simple basically, simple timber.
Thank you Lucy, Barbara, you have a question?
Thank you Chair, I mean, I've got it written down because I study it quite extensively. Right, I mean, basically, sort of, local authorities are responsible for protecting historic environments through the planning process, we know this. And this is reflected in the draft local plan which is undergoing a formal and lengthy adoption procedure now. It makes a number of references to how we should protect our heritage assets, including their features and settings, that's D1. I don't accept that the proposals to convert the bakery with its open access to the historic features to a private dwelling where public access is denied will fulfil this. And of course, now there's the added concern about the beams sort of going from one building to another which effectively potentially compromises both buildings. The draft local plan also promotes 20-minute neighbourhoods, that's policy NC10, and local employment. So why are we considering a development which will force people to travel further for the goods and services they desire while also putting local people out of work? The draft plan indicates what we as a city wish to encourage and this proposal runs counter to its intent. And my question is, I'm frightened of the answer but I suspect I know what it is, what weighting the draft has in this application? Because I feel that if this, in a year's, a year hence, this chain, sorry, I'll try again. I feel if made a year hence, its chances of being approved would be absolutely minimal because that would have more weighting than now. And I'm concerned about sort of compromising the heritage aspects, not just of the building but of the location because if we grant planning now. Thank you.
You all right with that Lucy?
I was going to say that I'll ask legal services to comment on this. As you know, it's, it's only been through one stage. Whilst it's in the public domain, it certainly hasn't gone out to public consultation and there's a couple of stages before it gets there but I'll let Vicky answer.
I think the office has already stolen my thunder there. Essentially, you can give weight to an emerging local plan and the amount of weight given to it depends on how far through the process it is. At the moment, I would say the local plan is best described as still being within the confines of the council's internal processes until the full council has actually given approval for the draft plan as it's now in the public domain to go out to consultation. It really is in its very infancy here, so I would be looking to it, very limited weight.
Thank, thank you Vicky, and come on now to Cliff.
Thank you Chair, yeah, it was regrettable we didn't have a site visit to it yesterday. We did some site visits of other buildings, we didn't do this one. But I did have a look at some photographs on the internet and was able to study them. And I mean, I'm, I'm no expert on, on, on the construction of old buildings but I can see that it, that it's actually a stunning building on the inside. And I can see why people want to retain that as, as a community asset. So I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned that this is going to be lost. Thank you Chair.
Was that phrased as a question? That sounded more like a comment. I think we'll have to let that one go but like you, I, I love seeing a crook roofed, crook beams in a building. It shows the amazing things they could do 800 years ago. Brian Holmshaw.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I have got a question, I've got comments as well and I can only frame them as comments, so I'm going to hold back on those. But shall we agree then that we're moving to comments now?
I have got one question, I was just about to say I've got one question.
You're going to do the question function.
I'm going to do the question.
Don't worry, I will. So, there's, there's a kind seems to be a lack of public access here. Pernoons in the crook frame do look pretty good, they're pretty cool, I like those. And we've lost a lot of those in South Yorkshire and on the Pennines. So it would be good to have access to them, I don't think that's going to happen. However, is it possible that we can have a condition that allows for some heritage interpretation? A small interpretation board, if this gets passed, if it gets passed? Can we have a small interpretation board that highlights the history and the archaeological significance of this building within Ecclesfield on the exterior, or near the exterior? Could we do that?
So you're asking for that to be put in as a condition?
Oh, I'm asking, is that possible and secondly, can we put a condition in?
Lucy, is that a reasonable condition to add if this is, if this is passed?
Because it's next to a public highway, you possibly could alter the second, the, the archaeological condition. I mean, that sometimes comes with a requirement for interpretation anyway. So I think if members were so minded, I think that is something you probably could insert into that, into that condition, that requirement.
Thank you for that suggestion, right. I'll open it up to members' comments now. Roger, you are straight in there.
Yes, I think despite the officers' valiant attempts and hard work that they've obviously put into this, I'm going to vote against it on the grounds that it's a change of use. There will be a multiplier effect, not just in terms of the supply side which was outlined by, by the residents here but also the fact that it's, it actually relies on somebody else to do the baking, some other business which is not necessarily concerned with another shop down the road. So there is a multiplier effect in terms of employment and it may well be a loss of business not only to the person who's running the business but also to the person who's supplying the, the bread and the cakes and so on. So it's a tilted balance is this and so I'm going to go the other way and say I'm going to vote against it on change of use grounds, thank you.
Thank you Roger, Barbara, do you want to comment?
Yeah, thank you Chair, I suppose it's, again, it's the heritage that really does bother me and I know that it says on page 72 of the council's heritage policy, lacks the heritage balancing exercise specified but I'm not so sure that I agree with that, so on that basis, I will be, you know, voting against the recommendation, thank you.
Brian, you want to comment?
Yes, so a couple of comments I wanted to make was that if this was a designated asset of community value, that would give weight to it. I think that the governance officer has already mentioned that. So if it was a designated asset of community value, which it seems to be used as, but it's not designated. So we can't use that as a weighter. So that's one aspect of it.
Secondly, on the buried works on-site, I'm interested in those and making sure that those are recorded somewhere. So that's a kind of request, I suppose, that the buried works that are going to be exposed during the works on-site. Heritage itself also has a weighting existing now. Not the same as if it was the local plan, but it does have a weighting. And on that basis, because I think the heritage will be spoilt by this, I am going to be voting against this application.
Thank you for that Brian. Sorry, Vicky, you want to comment?
Thank you Chair. It's just a note there that during those comments, a member did put to the words tilted balance. And obviously, this is an application for a housing development, albeit only one unit. Therefore, the tilted balance does come into play in respect of the NPPF. And I don't know whether Lucy would just want to comment on that aspect. Obviously, in this case, in paragraph eleven D, we have got one in terms of the application of policy in the framework that protects areas or assets of particular importance, provides clear reason for future development proposed, or any adverse impact of doing so will significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies in the framework as a whole. So it's just whether Lucy would like to comment on the tilted balance application. Thank you.
Lucy, over to you.
Chair, yes, we've covered this off in the report. And in our view, the balance is in favour of the development because in our view, actually, the heritage will be an improvement over the current situation. So we've made that quite clear in the report. And obviously, it delivers a single dwelling as well. So in our assessment, the tilted balance tips in favour of the proposal.
Thank you. I'm going to move now to a vote.
In this case, I will be voting against the officer's recommendation.
Tony?
Abstain.
Tony?
You looked at me, I voted for.
Nigat?
I'm going to be voting against it.
Roger?
Against the application.
Barbara?
Against the recommendation.
Cliff?
Against the recommendation Chair.
I think that's a clear vote against.
Chair, would you like me to come in at this point?
Yes please.
Thank you Chair. What's just happened here is that the vote on the officer's recommendation has just been lost. Therefore, a member needs to move reasons for refusal. Obviously, that's got to be a planning reason for refusal. And once that discussion's been had, I would suggest that Chair invites the planning officer to comment on those reasons. Thank you.
Barbara this time.
Basically, I think it's what Roger would say, it's this tilted balance. I mean, sort of, it's an argument, how could that argument be used in this case when sort of permission was granted to convert a dwelling to a shop earlier? It just doesn't strike right, you know, it's wrong balance. You can't argue it both ways. And the second thing is, I mean, heritage, I suppose, which is my particular issue. I mean, it's, again, to a certain extent, subjective. Yes, there might be improvements made, but those improvements can still be made to the property as it exists, you know, sort of, if it stays in business. And I still think that sort of the community asset value sort of kicks in. So there's three reasons, I think, where we could actually formulate a case for refusal. Thank you.
Roger, do you want to add to that?
I'm not sure whether Barbara mentioned the change of use.
Yeah.
Yeah, change of use, yeah. That was an important one, as well as the heritage. But also, I feel that it's very important that the business, it carried on as a business rather than just another resident, it's only a marginal difference to the housing situation anyway.
Brian? Yes, if I could, I agree with that, actually, those proposals. Just to add, to say that there is an interior aspect to this, which I think is where the tilt does not work in favour of the changes outside. So I don't think it reaches that threshold that I feel acceptable to us as a committee. That's what I'm putting forward.
So...
Chair, I must admit, I'm finding it difficult to interpret exactly what reason for refusal the members are seeking here. So I think you need to be, give me more clarity and perhaps a policy basis as well.
If I've understood what members are saying correctly, that because it's only the change of use of one property which gives you one more home, that it is so marginal that the tilted balance is not substantial in this case? The... There are also issues around the heritage of the property that would be lost to the benefit of the local community and more widely, given that people come from far and wide to see this building.
So it seems to me, I think, so you're referring, I think, to the interior then? If you go to the interior, because that would be compartmentalised more than it is now. Is that a fair reflection?
I think so, yes.
So your interpretation is that the compartmentalisation and the changes that you need to enact to do the change of use into a dwelling, which would obviously provide more compartmentalisation than the current situation? You're saying that that heritage impact means that the tilted balance is not in play because the heritage aspect is more important to you in this case? Something along those lines? Right, I'm just trying to understand. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yes Barbara.
It wasn't just that, it was also sort of access to the interior where the main heritage asset is. And sort of, we've got access now, won't in the future. And I think that compromises the decision quite markedly.
I don't think that's a planning reason though.
Right, so basically, so what you're saying is what you first suggested, it's the fact that sort of the internal rearrangements would affect the crooks, the crook.
Sorry, I think I'm interpreting that that's what I think you mean, but although it's not been expressed really clearly, that from understanding your discussion about it, that's how I understand you mean, because you were all talking about the crooks more than anything else in the discussion leading up to this as well. Vicky, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you. Yeah, so I think what the point Lucy's mentioning here is about the tilted balance. And the first part of the tilted balance, paragraph eleven D1, does allow you to apply paragraphs of the NPPF that protect heritage assets to mean that the tilted balance, that part of the tilted balance is engaged, as opposed to looking at whether the benefits outweigh the adverse impact. So I would suggest that members look to the NPP paragraphs regarding heritage assets as to whether they think that can come into play there. Thank you. It may help members to note that at page one hundred and thirty-eight of the report is where the heritage impacts are mentioned. Thank you.
Can't be that page number?
Sorry Chair, it's page one hundred and thirty-eight is where the heritage issues of both applications are mentioned, if members want to turn to that and look for that. Thank you.
No, that's on the last, that's the last application.
Can I say Chair, that I don't think it's discussed in any depth. There's a lot on archaeology, but not on heritage. So there isn't a lot that I spotted that's in...
Chair, I've got the NPPF up in front of me now, sorry, thanks Chris for providing it. So paragraph eleven... D says you can, you know, you can look at assets of heritage assets and use those as a reason to not engage the tilted balance, basically. So I think that's what, that is what the discussion you were saying was. So that, so we're formulating a reason around that, aren't we?
I'll go with that. Can we also use the fact that it was a change of class use in this case?
Chair, my interpretation is that it's a combined reason. So the alterations that are required to enact the change of use will have the implications for the crook frame. I think that's really the crux of it.
So what you did there.
Chair, sorry, can I just ask the planning officer to comment on section sixty-six and section seventy-two, which I think I'll refer to on page one hundred and thirty-eight in respect of another report? Because obviously, they do come into play here in respect to it being a listed building as well.
Chair, I mean, that's that you've got to have regard for the protection and enhancement of listed buildings and conservation areas. So that's the overriding, overarching part of the Act. And then the NPPF feeds off down from that Act, as do our local policies.
And can we also refer to the local plan, albeit in its infancy? It is something that's, we know it's a work in progress, but it is meant to be uncontroversial.
Chair, no, not in a reason for refusal. We would refer to the current unitary development plan in the reason for refusal and the national planning policy framework. So those are the documents we'd refer to, what we would normally do. So if members consider that the reason for refusal is around the issue of the changing of the use to the dwelling house means that the interior of the building is compromised, so that compromises the heritage asset's special significance. And so you don't think the tilted balance is in play for that reason because it's a heritage asset that needs to be protected? Obviously, we can go away and formulate a reason for refusal that can then be agreed with yourself Chair.
Are people happy with that, members?
Chair, at this point, I believe that the planning officer has just suggested one reason for refusal with the exact wording to be delegated to officers in conjunction with yourself as Chair for this item. If that's the case, it's now for members to vote on that as a recommendation. Thank you.
So can I propose it? Because we have to propose in second, don't we? Yeah.
Thank you Barbara. Thank you Brian. So we now have a new proposal that we accept that we have rejected this application. And we'll allow officers to go away and draft up more substantial reasons to explain the decision. So can I have those in favour, starting with Brian?
Yes, I accept that proposal.
Abstain.
Tony Downing?
Abstain.
I'm okay with that proposal. I'm okay with that proposal.
Accept the proposal, thank you.
Barbara?
For the new proposal.
For the new proposal Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that's carried.
Chair, you also need to move on to the, it would be the same reason, but item nine C.
Item nine C, isn't it?
Chair, would it be just useful for me to summarise? Obviously, with this being a listed building, we have two types of application here. So what's just happened is that members have refused the first application. In respect to the second application, the initial vote would still be for the officer's recommendation as drafted in the report. Obviously, as Lucy said, if members were inclined to vote in the same way, we could go through that process, but nevertheless, we should go through the process. Thank you.
Can I just clarify that if members then voted for the proposal in nine C, that would be contradictory to what was agreed in the previous?
Of course, it wouldn't necessarily make sense to vote and approve this. Obviously, the previous vote is a material consideration in terms of where you're at. Nevertheless, it is just the way the planning regime works to put these into two different applications. Obviously, in terms of a common sense position, I wouldn't expect that people would vote for one and refuse the other because obviously, they do go hand in hand. But say, this is the way the planning regime works in respect to these two applications. Thank you.
So just for clarification, if members have voted to turn down the planning application, it would then make sense for them to turn down this application for the demolition of the outbuildings as a... Yeah, because the proposal is demolition of outbuildings and use of former bakery/cafe as a dwelling house with associated alterations to fenestration and landscaping.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, just to clarify, obviously, what members took into consideration, how they weighed up their planning judgment in respect of the previous application, I would imagine, you know, it would be unusual to weigh up the listed building application in a different way. Nevertheless, members are obviously open to do that. But it would make for an interesting discussion as to why members would approve one and refuse the other. Thank you. So Chair, unless anybody wants to make any, ask any questions on the second application or any comments, I would suggest that the normal course events here would move straight to the vote on the officer's recommendation, which obviously is the officer's recommendation to approve. Does that clarify?
Before we do, I'm going to ask members if you all understand what you've just been told. Yeah, you're happy with that? All right, I'll take out the word happy. I'm going to go to councillor Brian Holmshaw.
Right, in this case, I do not agree with the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Downs?
Abstain.
Councillor Downing?
Abstain.
Councillor Basharat?
Not for the officer's recommendation.
Do you mean against the officer's recommendation? Thank you.
So against the officer's recommendation.
Against officer's recommendation.
Councillor Woodcraft?
And against the officer's recommendation Chair.
Chair, would it be useful for me to come back in at this point? I do apologise for the procedure, but nevertheless, it is there. Obviously, the vote on the office's recommendation has been lost, so it's for members to put forward a reason, obviously for the planning officer to comment and then to vote on that reason. As I say, I totally understand that members may be well inclined to go along with what's just happened, nevertheless, it is the procedure to be followed.
Can the same reasons that were given for the first one be applied?
If that's what, of the reasons why members want to refuse the application, then yes, certainly.
And would, could you also add consistency?
Although I did say the previous decision was a material consideration, I don't think there's anything to be gained by listing to a slightly amended reason, if you like, for the listed building application. If this item were to go further through the planning aspect of its regime, I imagine they would be taken together in any event, and so a consistent reason for refusal might be sensible.
Are members happy with that? Thank you all very much. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the reasons for refusal that you've just heard me give? Thank you very much Barbara and Roger. Now we, now we go to the vote, so councillor Brian Homshaw. We're voting for the reasons we've given for refusal.
Yes, I vote to accept the basis for refusal.
Abstain.
Councillor Downing?
Abstain.
Councillor Basharat?
Proposal agreed.
Voting for the reasons as stated.
Yeah, accept the reasons.
Voting for the reasons, Chair.
Thank, thank you all very much for that. My job is done and I can invite councillor Alan Woodcock back to the, this seat. It's interesting.
I suggest we take a five minute comfort break, if that's okay with the members? Could you come back for half past please? Land at the junction of Derbyshire Lane and Norton Lees Road, Missus Wood Sheffield, so that's over to you, thanks Chris.
Thank you Chair. Let's start first of all by drawing members' attention to item four on the supplementary agenda, just simply to note that one of the conditions, number 12, is to be deleted as that, as the requirements of that condition are effectively duplicated by condition 25, and there's no need for, for the first one, so the recommendation there is to delete condition 12. So just referring to the screen first of all, this is a site in the middle of a quite dense residential area off Derbyshire Lane, the junction with Norton Lees Road. It currently houses one dwelling which is unoccupied and has been for some time, and some garage buildings towards the north of the site. The house fronts on to Norton Lees Road, the garage building's on to Derbyshire Lane, and there's an access quite close to the junction. Neither the house nor the garage have been occupied or used for a while. These just, just to give you the context, so this is the Derbyshire Lane frontage, you can see the garage, the single storey building in the foreground, houses adjoining the site, number 68 immediately adjoins the site, going down the hill there. You can also see waiting restrictions around the junction, the junction's just behind us where the photograph's taken from. That's looking up the hill, and you can see there, the grey building is at the junction of Norton Lees Road, and that's two storey housing. It's quite, it's worth noting the gable there because that features in the design of the, the proposed scheme. This is the garage itself, which clearly sees is not in great condition. A view within the site of the garage, noting there that it's completely hard studded, there's no vegetation within the site at all, save for a very small hedge on the Norton Lees Road frontage. That's the house which is to be demolished as part of the proposals along with all the outbuildings, and that's another view of it from Norton Lees Road with aforementioned hedge. That's the junction of Derbyshire Lane, Norton Lees Road, with the house again to the right hand side, and the other houses opposite, you can see that the houses opposite are two stories slightly elevated, so slightly taller than a normal two storey property perhaps. And again, the, for identification, the building with the grey gable, again, you can see the waiting restrictions around the junction. Similarly here, that's looking up Derbyshire Lane, and again, waiting restrictions going up the junction to where the silver car is parked effectively. This is a cottage which is a bit of an anomaly in the street scene in that it's somewhat smaller, built of stone, set back a little further. That's immediately adjacent to the application site, so the application site starts to the right hand side of that sort of rusty covered gate. This chair is the proposed layout of, of the site, albeit a small scale. So the proposal is to demolish the, all the buildings on the site and build two blocks effectively, you can see there forming an L shape, accommodating 11 flats, seven two bedroom and four one bedroom units. All but the one bedri, sorry, all but one two bedroom flat are located on Derbyshire Lane, so 10 of the units are in the Derbyshire Lane, sorry, frontage, and one of the units is on, it fronts on to Norton Lees Road, which is the shorter leg of the L. So this just, I'll just quickly take you through the floor layouts going up the building. So this is on Derbyshire Lane, you can see there's two, two bedroom units there, and at that level only a staircourt on, below ground on the Norton Lees Road frontage. Coming up the building, you've then got four apartments there, and on the Norton Lees frontage, a, an undercrofted parking area for two vehicles. Within the scheme, there are, there are two off-street parking spaces, and the small building to the right, right hand top corner is a secure cycle store for 16 bikes. The parking spaces are both electric vehicle charging points. On the Norton Lees frontage, that's the top unit, that is the two bedroom unit that fronts on to Norton Lees, it's a two storey building at this point, with then a room in the roof space completing that unit. So the roof scape, you can see there that we've got roof lights and also dormer windows running, in Derbyshire Lane's case, at right angles to the road, and on the Norton Lees Road frontage looking back into the site. This is the design approach taken, it's a contemporary approach but using materials that are appropriate for the area. Largely red brick with some elements of brick detailing to provide some variation, and a metal standing seam roof. The dormer windows, you can see there, they are set back quite a way along the roof slope, so they won't appear as prominent as they're doing that, in that elevation. What's a little bit difficult to see here, and without something to, to actually point, it's a little difficult, but the, the sort of mauve coloured shading to the right, the top of that is the ridge height of number 68 Derbyshire Lane, which is the adjacent dwelling, and then the horizontal line a few metres down from that is the Eaves level. So the Eaves level of, of this scheme, at the base of those individual gables, sits higher than, a metre or two higher than the Eaves level of the adjacent house on Derbyshire Lane, but that is very characteristic of the properties that step up Derbyshire Lane with the topography. So there are quite a lot of drawings, I'll whizz through them, and I can obviously go back to any if, if members have any questions. This is an internal section within the site, sorry, the last one, is the two storey building that fronts on to Norton Lees Road. Internally, there is a decked access to the upper floor flats achieved from, from that staircourt. This is the elevation effectively to Norton Lees Road, as you can see, it's two stories there, and it's quite modest in overall height, and for comparison, that's an existing streetscape, so the building to be demolished on the top image, you can see is, is sort of broadly the same height as the adjacent two dwellings, and then on the proposal, that remains the case, and again, you can see that the scheme sat in the middle of that street scene, just follows the topography stepping up the side, up the, up Derbyshire Lane. These are just a, a number of cross sections which don't add an enormous amount. You can see from here that there are, there are some areas of landscaping within the site, the two to the left hand side aren't accessible spaces therefore for visual enhancement in particular, and the space within the site internally is a, is an amenity courtyard for, for residents to use. So just, you can see from the report that there are around 30 objections, principally on parking, but also, parking grounds, but also in terms of scale and design, and overbearing impact and privacy loss to neighbouring properties. It's within a housing policy area where the proposal being put forward is a preferred use, and the existing use of the site is actually a mixture of preferred and unacceptable uses in policy terms, the garage being an unacceptable use in a housing area. We support the design, as I said previously, it's, it's contemporary design that takes cues from the area in terms of materials, it steps up appropriately, relates well in scale to its neighbours. We don't believe there are any significant neighbour impacts, any minor impacts that there were with the odd window presenting an overlooking opportunity, we've identified those in the report and recommended obscure glazing, most notably, the two storey block on Norton Lees Road has a gable window that faces the adjacent property, and that appears within the conditions to be obscure glazed, and equally, a small screen on the end of the deck access which is at the right hand end of that image on the main block to avoid overlooking of the neighbouring gardens. There was an ecology survey which, for the buildings, which identified no evidence of bats, though it is a little dated now and will need updating, and a condition on the recommended, on the agenda papers recommends that that is imposed to deal with that, to require a new survey before any demolition's commenced. The key issue is car parking, two spaces for 11 flats, on the face of it is short, and there is on-street car parking at present, but surveys have been undertaken by officers at various times of day, and there has always been some availability. Indeed, when we were there yesterday, there was availability, but surveys yesterday when we went in the morning, that was sort of half past 10, you'd expect that, but it's still the case in the early evening and Sundays, for example, when other visits were undertaken. There are waiting restrictions, parking restrictions around the junctions to prevent any, or reinforce any, any sort of parking which would be inappropriate. It's, the site's ideally located for low car, co-car ownership occupancy, it's within easy walking distance of a number of facilities and amenities on Chesterfield Road, in Woodsey itself, and there's good buses at service, good bus services to, to the centre, we don't believe congestion is an issue here, and the accident data doesn't demonstrate there to be a problem either. So overall, we feel it's a scheme that delivers many benefits, including 11 new residential units, visual enhancement of the site, and, and those benefits outweigh any concerns about the, the car parking shortfall in our view, hence a recommendation for approval, Chair.
Thank you Chris. We have no speakers on this, so I'll go straight to members' questions.
I'm quite liking the, the positive sides, what it's going to do to the, the area, just a question, I think there was some issues raised around the noise, how long will this construction work take? Maybe I've missed that information, so thank you, that was an issue raised, and I think it covered the privacy side of stuff, so just that question.
Chair, we can't say how long a, a, a site will take from, from start to finish, and indeed, it can be bestowed for several reasons at, at any point, but noise from construction etcetera is dealt with through environmental protection legislation, so it's not something that we would, we would take significant account of.
Thanks Chris. Any further questions, Mike?
Thank, thank you Chair. I just have a concern that for the, the homes that are on Derbyshire Lane, there's bound to be a number of residents there who will have motor vehicles and no, no obvious parking spaces, but I just wonder whether that land on the corner, I know there's supposed to be a tree there, but what's to stop people just parking cars on that, on that green space?
Chris?
Thank you Chair. The intention is for that to be, there'll be a boundary wall built around that, on that corner, and indeed along the, the whole site, so it wouldn't be accessible, Chair.
Thank you Chris. Brian?
I notice on page 105, efficient use of land, that the, there is a density level of approximately 146 dwellings per hectare, which is pointed out, is significantly higher than the range normally required for this area, and above, we've got that policy that's connected to that, which is CS26, which gives a, where the density for a site between 40 and 60 dwellings per hectare, so it's a lot more. So I'm worried that, you know, this is a very densely packed area, a small densely packed area, with small properties as well. So, so is, is that correct? Is that, is that what you're recommending?
Yes, yes Chair, it is. The, the report provides some explanation of that, I think, insofar as it says that a, a higher than perhaps normal level of density is to be expected with, with a, a flat scheme as opposed to individual dwellings, that will, that will always be the case. But, I'm afraid I don't have a figure Chair, but the, just looking at the image there, the, the area surrounding is, is very densely developed, and I, I would suggest it's probably in excess of 40 to 60 dwellings per hectare, the policy ambition in any event. The other point to bear in mind is that since, since policy CS26, which is what's been referred to there, of the core strategy was implemented, the MPPF very much now stresses the importance of maximising densities within, within a development, and indeed resisting development which doesn't achieve efficient use of land. and indeed resisting development which doesn't, um, uh, achieve, uh, efficient use of land. Um, so this, this is something that crops up quite commonly these days, particularly with flat schemes where the density levels appear very high.
Brian?
So following on from that as well is the size of the properties. Could, could you give me the, uh, uh, an average size of the properties? I'm, I failed to find it within the document.
I can't give you an average size, Chair, but we have checked them against the, um, national space standards and those in the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide, and, and they exceed both of those.
Thank you, Chris. Do you have any idea how far they exceed them? I mean, when you say exceed, is it, they, they don't reach them or they, or they go further than the space standards?
I haven't got, again, I haven't got the details, Chair, but what I meant by what I said is that they are larger than the, uh, minimum space standards set out in both those documents.
Okay, that, right. More colleagues? Tony?
Yes, Chair, I think, I think this is a, a good development and obviously it will, uh, it will modestly contribute to the, uh, to the housing stock of Sheffield and I think, I think this is, it's, I think we, I would, I would vote in favour of the officer's recommendation on this one.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've visited the site yesterday. Um, and it's quite clear, as, as we've seen in the, uh, in the photos, um, on display this afternoon, that it, it is a very derelict and rundown site, and it has been like that, um, particularly on the, um, Darbyshire Lane side, um, for, for many years. Um, and I, I think overall, this will be a welcome improvement. I do have concerns that, um, there aren't enough car parking spaces, but I don't think that's a planning consideration that would carry much weight if we were to, uh, to turn down the application. And certainly the, the design, um, to my mind is perfectly acceptable and, and fits in with the neighbourhood.
Thanks, Mike. Roger?
Well, uh, the words have been taken right out of my mouth, by, by Mike. So I, I agree one hundred percent with what he said. It certainly will enhance the area and, and I think the, um, uh, the standard looks very good. And, uh, uh, because they've got one and two bedrooms, I, I think that will fit a particular clientele which, uh, is required. So I'm a hundred percent in favour of it.
Thanks, Roger. Barbara?
Thank you, I mean, I won't repeat what you've said, but I agree with you. But also, with bearing in mind that I'm, I'm looking at the local draft plan, I think it's well within its keeping with what the intentions is for that in the future. And yes, I accept the, the parking issue, but potentially, sort of looking forward, I mean, it's a perfect little residence development for car shares. You know, it is potentially very sustainable travel-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, Brian?
And yes, I, I, I think I'm going to have to agree with this and I will be voting for the application. I'd like to have seen a reduction in the number of flats because the implications of having twelve flats is that there will be pressure on, off, on-street parking, which I think will be tricky. So it would have been good to have a slight, slight reduction in the flats, uh, and less impact on parking.
Okay, Brian, anyone else? Right, we'll move to the vote then, please. Brian?
Yes, I'll, I'll be voting for this application.
Mike?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Tony?
For?
Tony?
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Roger?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Barbara?
For the recommendation.
Cliff?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, last pass, thank you. Right, the next item, nine E, which is application number twenty-two stroke zero one six one seven stroke F U L, which is, excuse me, uh, thirty-nine four-three Charles Street and one eight six one nine four Norfolk Street. At the beginning of the meeting, um, councillor Holmes Shaw, um, made a request to defer. Um, Vicky from Legal said that we need to, um, you know, put that, so I need a proposer, please, to defer. I need a second to defer, and then obviously I will put it to the vote. So, any, a proposer? Brian?
So, so what I'm proposing is that, um, until a full and appropriate consultation with local residents takes place, something that has not occurred up till now on this application, that this application is deferred, can be brought back at another later stage if, 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 uh, that's the wish, but, uh, that we defer it. So that is my proposal.
Thanks, Brian. Do I have a second?
Sorry, Chair, um, just in respect of, um, councillor Holmes Shaw's comments there, um, I don't know if Lucy would like to, uh, comment on, on what, on what he's proposed there because, um, it sounded from the proposal that there was a suggestion that there's been some deficiency in the council's process to date. Uh, and I think Lucy has suggested previously and what's in supplementary, um, is that there hasn't actually been any deficiency in terms of our process and the process has been followed. Uh, you know, notwithstanding that, obviously it's still open to members to defer, um, for, you know, for the purposes of, of delaying, uh, the matters, um, for, for the participation of the public. Uh, nevertheless, I would, um, invite Lucy, as the planning officer, to comment on, on whether there has to be any actual deficiencies in the process to date.
Thanks, thank you. Lucy?
Um, Chair, I think as I pointed out, um, uh, towards the start of the meeting, um, if you look at supplementary report number two, which references this particular application, the application has been in for quite a long time. Um, so members of the public were notified of this application. They were notified by letter on the eighteenth of May, twenty twenty-two, um, as were councillors via the weekly list. Uh, what hasn't happened is a re-consultation, um, in respect of revised proposals that have been submitted. And that's because, in our view, the proposals are quite minor, um, but they're also a minor improvement, um, in relation to the neighbouring properties. Uh, so in that, in that sense, we wouldn't ordinarily re-consult neighbours for that purpose. Um, so just to be clear, um, site notices went out, it went out in the press, individual letters went out. We, we're aware of the, um, strength of feeling. All the objections that have been received to this specific application are in the agenda pack. Um, so ju- just to be clear, procedurally, we, we have, um, notified in the correct manner.
Thank you, Lucy. Yes and I may have to agree that, yeah, everything was complied with. I didn't get a second, so, um, unfortunately, Brian, that's not passed, uh, we will continue. So Lucy, we'd like to do your presentation, please.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, obviously, there's obviously a lot of strength of feeling about this particular application, um, completely understand that. And members will recall that a previous application for a seven-storey building was refused at a miss, meeting of the committee in January this year. Um, and that was for two reasons. Um, members considered that the scale, um, mass and sighting, um, and the reduced sunlight and overbearing to residents of Barona Play, sorry, Barona House, St Paul's Chambers and Waterhouse, um, as well as users of the amenity space at the rear of St Paul's Chambers, um, was, was, the, this, the impact was too great, um, on the, on those people. Uh, the second reason was in relation to the scale and massing detracting from the setting of the listed Prudential Assurance Building uh, and the city centre conservation area. Um, and members considered that the harm in those respects didn't, um, weren't outweighed by the benefits. Um, that application is subject to an ongoing appeal. Um, the council have put their case in for the appeal, so the inspectorate is considering that, but we don't have, um, a result from that appeal at the moment. Um, so this proposal that's before you now seeks to address the reasons for refusal, um, as far as the applicant feels able to do so. Um, and this includes securing further amendments during the course of the application. So in brief, the following changes are relevant. I'll, I'll run through the presentation, um, after, well, in fact, if, if you just, um, move on to the aerial shot and then the next, um, slide. Uh, just to remind members, obviously some of you went out on-site, um, again, yesterday, some of you went on-site as part of the previous application. Um, and we also managed to go and have a look, um, in the rear, um, as well. So you, you could see the relationship of the apartments in, in the buildings that, that surround the site. Um, so that, so the proposal now is for a six-storey building. Um, and that, um, is relevant in that the previous proposal was for seven stories. Um, and that amounts to just short of a three-metre reduction in height. It's two point nine metres to be precise. Um, the extent of the upper floor has been reduced, um, particularly where it is closest, um, to St Paul's Chambers. Um, so that has been reduced in scale at that point. Um, and the overall depth of the building has been reduced. So where previously there was going to be no gap, um, when you, um, viewed the courtyard area from the residence courtyard, uh, there will be a small gap. Um, obviously it won't be a substantial gap, but there will be a small gap, so that, that's a difference as well. There has been changes to the street elevation, particularly where the building abuts St Paul's Chambers, and that's by setting it back slightly and forming a more solid element which is similar to the, um, to the current arrangement. Um, as I say, I'll run through the slides after I've given a brief, um, verbal presentation. Um, the main changes to the appearance of the building are, are just the height, really. The overall design concept is, is very similar, uh, with the ground floor faced in red sandstone to, to match the buildings adjacent and then aluminium cladding over and then extensive areas of glazing. Um, it's still the intention to incorporate a green wall on part of the rear elevation. Um, so the height of the new building is approximately equivalent to the Eaves level of the Prudential Assurance Building. So when we went on-site yesterday, we went around the full extent of the block. Um, so you can see that the Prudential Assurance Building is the dominant building within the block, within the conservation area, uh, and that is the listed building. The fifth floor plan is set back from the north, which is the element that is closest to St Paul's Chambers and closest to that outdoor amenity space. Um, so that there is now limited visibility of the building from the peace gardens aspect. Um, when viewed from Pinston Street to the north, the building now will not be visible above the Prudential Assurance Building. And that was one of the considerations last time, that was one of the reasons, um, for refu- for refusal. So that, that addresses that aspect of the proposal. Um, and obviously whilst there is, is still a significant transition of scale between the new build and Barona House and St Paul's Chambers, this is well handled and appropriate to the corner context. I'll just run through a few of the slides now before I go on to the, the next element of the presentation. So if you could, obviously the, the, this is the, um, view of the building as it is now from, from the surrounding streets. Um, so it's the three-storey grey brick building, you'll all be familiar with it because it's directly diagonally across from Howden House. Um, if you go on to the next group of photographs, this is the residence terrace at the back of St Paul's Chambers. So this is the area that on the last site visit, um, many members went to stand on this area to, to, to look at it. But on yesterday's site visit, you could also see back to where that area is. Um, if you move on to the next slides, again, these are, these are views out into the courtyard from the residence terrace and from, um, some of the walkways higher up the building. Um, so you're looking out into the central area within the block. Um, if you move on to the next photographs, and again, this is going higher up on, on the walkways at the back of St Paul's Chambers. So again, looking through to that space, um, at the back of the buildings. Um, this next series, um, importantly, the one on the, um, right-hand side at the top shows the balconies of the properties in Barona House that, that have a single aspect, and that is one of the important considerations. Uh, most of the apartments surrounding the, this site have dual aspect, both out onto the street and into the courtyard area. But it's those three specifically with the balconies that have single aspect onto the back of the new building. And obviously, as I said before, the, the space to the new building has been adjusted slightly to, um, try and, um, accommodate that, and obviously the height has been reduced as well. Um, the, sorry, can you just go back to that previous one? The bottom two there show the return of Prudential House into the space. So that large brick element that you saw yesterday from the, from the view that we had from the back of the building, that's part of the listed building that, that, that adjusts into the courtyard as it stands at the moment. If you go to the next slide, um, so the building on the, um, right-hand top image with the, with the yellow, that's the building that we're talking about. So that's where we ca- we came out of that building into that area behind the building. Um, and also the bottom images show the existing building. So, so obviously that, that building, the current building is in stark contrast to the attractive buildings around it. Um, and the, there is no objection to its demolition from, from a conservation point of view. Um, if you just move on to the next slide, um, so this just shows the, um, site plan, which you, you're all familiar with where the site is. If you go to the next, um, one, um, so this is the basement plan. Um, so that, that would be obviously underground, so that's where things like cycle storage would be. If you go to the next level, that's the ground floor. So the ground floor would cover the full extent of the site and that would include a retail unit on that, on that corner as well. Um, and then if you go to the next one, so the, the first to the fifth floors are, are the, basically more or less the same floor plate. So that's the first. The, the difference on the fifth is that it's cut back, um, to the, if you just go back to that previous image, sorry. Um, it's cut back to former terrace, so it is lower at the point where it adjoins the Prudential Buildings. That the fifth floor is, is different to the floors below in the, in that it's cut back. The red outline that you see there is, is the extent of the previous refusal. Sorry, that TV keeps going off, doesn't it? Is the extent of the previous refusal. Um, so that's where you can see, um, how the depth of the building has changed and how that cut-out point, um, that's closest to the residence courtyard has been incorporated. Um, so obviously that's, that's an important consideration, um, there. If you just move on to the, that's just the roof plan, and then if we move to the next slide. Um, so this one shows the distances. So if we stick on that slide for, for the moment, because obviously, um, residential amenity is the other critical consideration. Um, so obviously, in this case, it's understandably, um, the biggest concern to residents. Um, and it is covered in detail on pages one four six to one five two of the report. Um, so in summary, it's accepted that two of the apartments in Barona House, uh, which have outlook towards the development, so two of those three that I pointed out, the two lowest apartments with the balconies, um, whose only outlook is towards the development, will, will not meet what's called the vertical sky component target for daylighting and sunlighting with the new development in place. Um, but in saying that, you need to note that their light levels are already compromised. Um, and this is because of their own balconies which restrict the light. And that's what I was trying to explain to members yesterday that were on the site visit, because the balconies, um, are quite solid structures in themselves. So they restrict the light to each of the apartments that's below them already. Um, so it's already difficult for light to penetrate those rooms for, for that reason. Um, and obviously, another important consideration from, from our perspective is that the outlook from these areas to the existing building is currently very poor. Um, net, members will have noted that there are, and there are sort of metal staircases, there's lots of air conditioning units. It's quite unattractive as it stands at the moment. And, and obviously whilst that will be replaced by a taller building, um, it will include a green wall and there won't be any windows at those levels overlooking directly, um, to the apartments because the windows only start higher up and above the existing apartments. Um, so you need to take the overall perspective into account in terms of improvements to outlook overall and not just in relation to loss of light. Um, in relation to the flats in Prudential House, um, there is a minor impact on three bedrooms, but bedrooms don't have the con- same consideration as living areas. Um, so we consider that the impact to those three bedrooms is acceptable in such a dense urban environment. Um, and similarly, the impact to St Paul's Chambers in terms of daylighting, um, is concluded to be acceptable from our point of view. Um, particularly again because the majority of apartments are dual aspect, so they're not solely reliant on the courtyard for light. They also look out to the peace gardens and out to surrounding road frontages. Um, obviously, we accept that the amenity space that was, was shown on some of those slides, um, at the first floor level behind St Paul's Chambers will be impacted by the development. Um, but to a lesser extent than the previous proposal. Um, so what we've looked at there and what the applicant has provided- So what we've looked at there and what the applicant has provided further information on at our request is that on March 21st, it currently receives two hours of sunshine to 32.5% of the area of the deck. And with the development in place, no part will receive two hours of sunlight on March 21st. So what you need to note from that is that the existing scenario on the 21st of March is poor already with 32.5%. So what we've also looked at is the impact on June 21st. And that currently receives two hours of sunlight to nearly 97.5% of its area. And with the development in place on the 21st of June, it would be 92.2%. So there's very little difference and certainly more than the BRE target, which is 50% of the area. So for the time when occupiers would be using that space more, the criteria that the BRE set for these sorts of areas is met. Obviously, another important aspect is overbearing. So the reductions in height and depth and mass to the northern corner that I mentioned, obviously, all serve to reduce the impact on surrounding residents. So in reaching a conclusion on the application, we've balanced the competing demands of needing to regenerate a degraded site against protecting the amenity of adjacent residents. And obviously, this is always going to be a difficult judgment in a dense urban environment. You know, and we are required to make those difficult judgments. And in the future, there'll be even more of these difficult judgments, given the density that we need to achieve in the city centre. Just before I go on to the final part, if we just move through the slides. So this slide is showing the distances that would be achieved and the setback. And obviously, the distances achieved to the new building are greater than they were in the previous refusal. So that's trying to address the reasons for refusal. And these distances are very similar to other schemes that you've approved in the city centre. Because in the city centre, you can't expect the same separation distances. And I think importantly, as I mentioned previously from Barona House, there will be no windows on that aspect of the building that face those flats directly at the back of Barona House. And those are the ones that we mentioned are in the worst position because they are not dual aspect. So I think just to bear that in mind with those. If you just move on to the next slide, that TV's going to go off by the look of it in a moment. So I'll look at this one instead. So this just runs through the elevations of the proposal. So this particular one is on to Norfolk Street. The next one is on to Charles Street, so that's where it adjoins Barona House. The next one is the interior. So this is what would be facing those residents I mentioned in Barona House. So that's the extent of the green wall. And then there are other windows that overlook the rooftops of Barona House. So if you then move on to the next slide, this is the aspect looking out from, in effect, down from, it's a section taken out looking from the, I suppose, the residence courtyard. So it's from St Paul's Parade. So then if you move to the next slide, these are showing the context of the new building with the existing built environment. So that shows that the relationship with surrounding buildings in your officers' view is more appropriate now and acceptable. There's another one, the next slide, also shows the Pinston Street context elevation and the Peace Gardens context as well. So it shows from the Peace Gardens that there's very little of the building that would be obvious from there. So if you just move to the next slide, so there are now a series of CGI images which show the building and its form and design. So if we just move through these images, that's looking down Charles Street. And if you move to the next one, this is showing the junction with St Paul's Parade. So that's where we've negotiated a solid treatment between the two rather than a fully glazed treatment. And it is slightly set back as well. And then that again shows that slight setback to St Paul's Parade. And then if you move to the next one, these are the ones showing the shadowing. So that's the existing shadowing from the existing building on the 21st of June. So this was the one I was describing where you get the two hours of sunshine and what difference the new scheme makes to that on the 21st of June, which is very little difference. So the next slide shows the scheme as it is proposed. So Chair, those are the end of the slides. So in summary, the benefits of the scheme in our view are, I didn't even mention the fact that it's proposed to be a net-zero building in that presentation, but it is proposed to be a net-zero building. It's the provision of grade-A office accommodation to support the local economy. It's in a highly sustainable location where we want these types of facilities to be provided. There are employment benefits both during construction and post-construction. And the design of the building is high quality. And it would regenerate a site which is currently underutilized and which detracts from the conservation area. And obviously, you need to balance all those benefits against the amenity impacts of the proposal as described to the residents. And that's clearly a really important consideration for you to make. But we have concluded that the benefits outweigh the negative aspects of the scheme. And the revised proposals compared to those that you saw before have made quite substantial changes to try and address those reasons for refusal that you came up with last time, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. We have speakers on this show. The first speaker is Anne, please, Anne Wootton. If you'd like to take, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, yes. Seems a long time since January when I was last here. And actually, we were in a separate room, weren't we, at that time? This, the reason why we weren't prepared for this is a little bit more complicated than what was presented. Indeed, we were informed in May, we did see the May plans. We were given no date for comments though for those. And the application then disappeared from the portal. And in August, we had a notification of an appeal to the Secretary of State for the seven-storey plan. Now, to which we responded. But actually, at that point, we were confused as to which plan was going into the Secretary of State, because we'd got a seven-storey one which had been refused, we'd got the six-storey one which was hanging around somewhere. And we'd been out to view the plans and talk to the architects of that. So we weren't quite sure what we were responding to. The actual opponent's statement was not available to us on the website until less than two weeks before the date when we were supposed to reply to the Secretary of State. So we had precious little time to actually do that response. We did meet that deadline. While looking through these, I noted that the present application is dated, I think it's the 6th of September. So that application came on while the appeal was still being looked at. And so we didn't know what was happening in that. We didn't know we got to respond to this six-storey one. Because the date on the planning portal is early September. We were waiting for a response to the appeal, but no response was received. We don't even know if that process of appeal was completed. I realised that it should have been completed by the end of October. So I started looking on the site. Meanwhile, somebody else had said that this had come up. I saw just last Saturday, I saw the submissions from the 6th of October and the 1st of November, from the planning officer on the 1st of November, and read them. And then yesterday, late yesterday, I heard about this meeting today. So it's not quite as simple as we've just not been following it. I'm sure you've come to this meeting and, you know, you've heard what a planning officer said. There has been a great deal of interest in this, a great deal of concern about it. It's quite hard really to say what, you know, it's gone ahead. It is being decided today. So all I can do really is to ask you to note the objections from before on basis of the loss of light, the overbearing, the decrease in airflow. In some cases, that is significant. I'm full of admiration for the work of the planning officers in what they've done to make this try and fit. And, you know, I appreciate the changes that they've made. It does seem substantial. It makes precious little difference to what actually is happening and what actually the light levels are on some of the properties, how amenity has been changed. It makes very little difference, actually. So all the objections we had before really come back into this one. And it's the same considerations you have to look. What else was there? Basically, I can't go into the detail I'd like. I went into enormous detail on the appeals application, no idea what's happened to that. And your decision is basically balances the residence wellbeing with the commercial gain and the amenity you want to do. I don't think I can say much more than that. We are very concerned about, you know, especially those residents who are losing up to 90% of the light. I haven't seen the new light thing that I've reported, but I'm sure that it's not very much different. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. The next speaker is Steve Davis, who's for the application. Again, Steve, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I'm the founder and CEO of Grantside, the owner of the site and the developer of the proposed development. Grantside is a private company wholly owned by myself and as such is able to develop and construct criteria and standards that I set out through our guiding four pillars of design, values, people and community. And I take pride in ensuring that the developments we create and bring forward are sustainable, environmentally conscious and leading in their design approach in terms of quality design and specification. As a developer, our mission is to create exceptional spaces and places through a people-first design approach embracing wellness, the environment and technology. I believe the scheme before you today represents the long journey and evolution of the design process that this building has gone through. In response to members' comments at committee previously and as part of this new planning application, the design team has produced multiple iterations of proposals, specifically in response to feedback from local residents, neighbours, stakeholders, other interested parties and your planning officers, which has resulted in the scheme being much reduced in scale and massing from that originally proposed to a much more modest scheme being considered today. In our opinion, the building proposed will significantly improve this corner from its current poor and tired state and will be subservient to other properties within the block, ensuring it does not dominate or overburden and brings forward a strikingly designed new building to uplift and excite this corner and the important thoroughfare on both Charles and Norfolk Streets. I do acknowledge that the building of our proposals will inevitably mean a change for residents currently living close by. And I appreciate that change from what they've become used to can be unnerving. But firmly do believe that our proposals will be an improvement on their outlook and provide improvements in environment, air quality, privacy and views. The inner courtyard views will be much improved by our building. And I do hope in time and through your consent today, the residents will get to see this. From the outset, we sought to develop a sustainable building achieving a net-zero carbon status. This has presented many challenges. And as the building scale has reduced, has come under significant pressure, both technically and financially, to be delivered. However, I am pleased to say that we have stayed the course on this key component of our scheme and retain this approach through our all design changes to deliver a 21st-century sustainable building for Sheffield that will importantly meet and exceed the requirements of new occupiers looking for high-quality grade-A space in the city. In their latest report, the Sheffield Property Association have stated that the city currently has the lowest grade-A office space of all UK core cities at just 12%. Plus, it had a significant disadvantage when competing against other cities for new occupiers who bring new jobs to the city and region. There's clearly an urgent demand and need for these new grade-A office spaces in Sheffield. This will be a positive office that attracts occupiers to Sheffield city centre and it has many positive benefits to offer. And for that reason, I would ask the members support the planning officer's recommendation to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, if you'd like to take, Chair. The next speaker is Chloe. Again, Chloe, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, all. My name's Chloe Parmenta from Urbana, the agent on the application. And we're representing Grantside, a Yorkshire-based developer focused on creating exceptional places which is sustainable and environmentally conscious. This application follows the recent refusal of the previously proposed CN Tower and seeks consent for the demolition of the existing building and erection of a six-storey office building with ground floor, commercial, retail and active space as well as cycle parking. The application has been recommended for approval by officers who agree that there have been substantial concessions made to thoroughly address the previous reasons for refusal. These were the impact on outlook, sunlight and daylight at the neighbouring properties and the impact of the scheme on the conservation area and heritage assets. Overall, the scheme has been reduced in size from seven to six stories as well as being considerably set back from neighbouring properties. Grantside have also worked with the council throughout the application to further increase the setback of the scheme from these properties and the transition in architecture from adjacent properties. It's been assessed by the consultant team and officers that the proposal would not have an adverse impact on the setting of the surrounding heritage assets or the overall conservation area. This is of course explained from a technical perspective in the officer's report, but we think it's important to cut through the jargon. Our fundamental opinion is that it is self-evident that a scheme of this quality and size is acceptable from a heritage point of view, given the context of neighbouring buildings that are significantly larger and more impactful. In terms of daylight and outlook for the neighbouring properties, it's accepted that areas in dense city centres can often not receive the same level of amenity as those in suburban locations. This is often accepted to achieve townscape objectives and higher densities in sustainable locations. Within the existing blocks surrounding the courtyard, there are currently substandard outlook distances between existing flats. Officers have agreed that the amendments included in the current proposal therefore result in acceptable impacts. In relation to the courtyard space, the proposals result in a very marginal reduction in the area receiving over two hours of sunlight. And in the summer months, when the sunlight amenity to the courtyard is likely to be most desirable, the courtyard will receive 92.2% of sunlight in the area, which is well in excess of the 50% guideline target that has been set. Overall, when compared to the previous CN Tower, the amendments secure much improved light impacts. And officers have concurred that this impact is acceptable in the specific city centre context, particularly in light of the following public benefits: provision of the first privately-funded net-zero office building in Sheffield, which sets a precedent for future development; provision of grade-A office space to attract and retain our employers; improved outlook compared with the existing and dilapidated building; and provision of a living wall which Grantside is committed to maintain and ensure it thrives. Fundamental to the growth of our city, the scheme delivers grade-A office space in the city centre which is currently lacking, evidenced in reports published by Savills and Knight Frank. The provision of grade-A and net-zero office space in the city is key to unlocking development potential here and ensuring that the current employers we have here are catered for in terms of their environmental requirements, the alternative being that they leave for other cities which are able to offer this accommodation. Not to mention the importance of attracting other employers from other major cities around the UK who all just have a two-year supply of grade-A office space, bringing them to Sheffield. The proposals adopt a flexible approach, meaning that occupiers can lease the building per floor or as a whole, etc. We also encourage members to view this within the context of the central area strategy and emerging local plan. We also encourage members to view this within the context of the central area strategy and emerging local plan, specifically the focus for the provision of homes in the city which will need to be complemented by employment opportunities. In terms of carbon neutrality, a net zero building is one where the total of all greenhouse gas emissions over the building's life cycle equals zero. In this case, this will be achieved through careful construction through embodied carbon phase and through renewable energy use during operation, including connecting the building to the city's district heating system. In conclusion, the application before you proposes a development of exceptional design quality, setting a new precedent for beautiful, sustainable design in this prominent location in the heart of our city, which will positively impact on the wider area and heavily influence economic growth of Sheffield. I therefore strongly urge you to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe. Do you want to respond? Lucy, please.
Chair, I think just to Anne Walton's comments in terms of the confusion. Obviously, it is difficult, I accept that, when there's an appeal ongoing. Obviously, the appeal is not determined by us, that's the planning inspectorate, that's the previous application. So they run that. What's happened so far is the applicants have put their statement in, the council have put their statement in, that's all with the inspectorate. All the residents have put their correspondence in. We always send all the residents' previous correspondence as part of the bundle anyway, so the inspectorates see exactly what was said at the time of the original application. So all that is with the planning inspectorate. What hasn't happened is that we haven't had a decision from the planning inspectorate yet, so we don't know when to expect that, but it is under consideration. In terms of the confusion over dates, I mean, obviously, this application was submitted and the publicity done in May. I think that the 6th of September date that Anne's referring to is what we refer to as the government target date for determination. So I think that that is the 13-week date, which is probably what the public see in terms of a target date. Now, obviously, this has gone beyond that target date because we've been in negotiations with the developer. We've also ourselves had to submit an appeal statement in respect of the previous appeal, so our focus was on that rather than this current application at that time, as it was with the residents, as you heard. So I think that's where that September date comes from. So obviously, I think I explained earlier as part of the statement previously that the publicity was carried out correctly, it's just that we didn't republicise some minor amendments that have been received through the course of the application, Chair. And I think, I've just realised that as part of that supplementary report, I don't think I went through the full supplementary report, Chair. That's just triggered my memory. Because we did receive representations, this is part two of this supplementary report, and it's all in relation to the issue that was explained by Anne Walton in terms of not being reconsulted and not being aware of the dates of the committee and so on. So that's why I summarised what we have done in terms of publicity in respect of the proposals and that we have carried out in accordance with the requirements of the legislation. Chair, just in terms of the other issues, I think we have covered all those in detail. I think from members' point of view, it might be helpful to have this slide up for when they're asking questions, which shows the arrangement. If you keep going backwards, that one, because that obviously shows the relationship to the residents and I think that's going to be obviously a critical consideration for members here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Members' question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's this appeal. I mean, if this current application is successful, but then the appeal is successful, where do we stand?
Lucy?
Chair, if the appeal is successful, i.e. the applicant wins the appeal, it means they are free to build the seven-storey version. If you approve this today and the appeal was approved, then it's up to them to decide which, you know, it's an either-or scenario. It would be up to them to decide which one to go ahead with.
Can I ask a question? Can we make it a condition that if we approve today's application, the, we can't withdraw it because it's gone too far, but that the appeal, if it's upheld, the developers will not use that appeal, they will stick to what we've approved today? Vicky?
It's a little unconventional. Say, it's not something that I've dealt with before, but on the face of it, I wouldn't envisage that it would be a reasonable condition that would meet the six tests. Obviously, the planning inspectorate will be deciding that on those material considerations that we discussed before. I don't think it would meet those six tests in terms of being reasonable.
Thanks, Vicky. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. The main objection coming from residents in the in the other blocks, St Paul's Parade and so on, is to do with the impact on reduced lighting levels. And in particular, it was pointed out that there are two flats where they only have windows that face into the courtyard. I believe that's correct.
It's three.
Three of them. And each of those flats, if memory serves, they had that sort of metal grid, iron grid balcony railings, which were compromising the light that could be reached. So my question is, could a condition be put in that the applicant can replace those railings with modern transparent panels, like we see on many of the developments in flats today? As a condition, it's doing some work to someone else's property, so it would need the landowner's permission there, I imagine. But could that be put in as a condition to mitigate the reduced lighting levels?
Chair, no, because the applicant doesn't control the building. It might be worth just flicking back to those photographs. So the reference to two that I think you were referring to is because two of them would still suffer worse light loss, but the third one, the tallest, the highest of them wouldn't. So it's the two at the bottom, so it's the two lower ones. And part of the reason for that, it's not really the railings at the front anyway, it's the deck of the, it's the solid deck of the balconies. Because you can see they're casting a shadow as it is now on that photograph when it was quite, it was quite a sunny day, obviously, when the case officer went out to take these photographs. And when you look at the floor plans that, obviously, I know you can't see them in great detail, but you've seen the presentation in advance. The floor plans for the apartments show that they are the only, those are the only apartments that have a single aspect. So it's those ones that we've always been the most concerned about in terms of outlook and loss of light. But the studies that have been done show that actually those balconies on those lower two are causing themselves problems, unfortunately. And our response was that you need to balance that against the fact that you're looking onto a pretty unsightly building at the moment with lots of kit and caboodle, with metal railings, metal staircases, it is a real mess, there's rusting bits. It's not an attractive proposition and you'd replace that with a living wall. Obviously, there's no denying that the new building is taller and has more impact, but I think we're trying to balance all the different competing objectives in the recommendation that we've come to you with.
Thanks, Lucy. Any further question? Brian?
Yep, so I've got a couple of questions. There'll be three. So I'm asking about low light levels in the amenity area and some of the flats which has just been referred to. I don't quite understand, I mean, some of them are already quite low, we can see that, experienced it from the site visit as well. I can't understand why you want to make them any worse. That is a consideration to me, a real material consideration, it certainly is for the city centre residents. Overbearing was referred to earlier. So that was, and the context that was given was that city centre residents can expect some degree of overbearing. And I wasn't keen on that comment because I think city centre residents should expect everything that everyone else in this city gets. And we should not be taken away from them. Can't treat them as second-class citizens. Thirdly, it's intended to be a zero-carbon building. And the question I'm going to ask is that, is the embedded carbon that will be released from the demolition of the existing building included in that calculation? And is there any data on that that can prove that point? Because that will be a significant amount released from taking down the original building. That's on that spot. So that's my questions.
Thank you, Chair. In relation to the light levels to the amenity area, what we were explaining was that in the main part of the summer when that deck would be expected to be used the most, there is barely any impact on the level of sunlight, is what we were talking about. Whereas in March, on March 21st, when that won't be used in the same manner, it currently only receives two hours of sunlight, 35% of it, and that would be reduced to zero. But we obviously are considering that the main impact for residents there is in the summertime months and that impact is very limited. In terms of light levels, you're right to point out that some of the light levels to these apartments are already poor, particularly on these apartments that face from Barona House. But in the majority of cases, a lot of the rooms where the light levels will be reduced further are bedrooms. And when you look at the guidance that's out there, that says that it's living areas that are the most important. And also, it's important to consider that a lot of these spaces are dual aspect. So whilst the light levels might be reduced from the courtyard side, they all have an aspect out to the outer faces, so to the highways and to the peace gardens in some cases as well. So you have to consider it in the round. And the guidance is based on suburban living, it's not based on city centre accommodation. So that's one of the key considerations as well. And the National Planning Practice Guidance says that you do have to take a more relaxed approach in the city centre. And that is not to say that, obviously, we're not saying that anybody that lives in the city centre is a second-class citizen, of course we would not. But it is anticipated that because of the much greater density of development in the city centre, you cannot achieve the same levels of light and the same outlook and the same separation distances. It's just not physically possible, given the urban grain. I can't answer that final question about demolition. If the Chair wants to bring the developer in to answer that question, that's his prerogative.
Steve? Are you able to answer that?
Obviously, at this stage in our proposals, it's a partway through design building. So we've been setting our statement of intent, the net zero carbon approach. We've set out in the documents how we would achieve that and what standards we'd do. I think it's the LETI, CIPC guidelines of net zero carbon. So that would be within, I think it's conditioned in the planning, I think that's what our scheme is. So through the design process, as it evolves from this day forth, is how we will achieve that. And that will obviously take into account the demolition and the embodied carbon and the operational carbon of the building as we go forward. So I don't have an exact answer because the building isn't designed that far along yet, but our statement of intent is in our plans and it's in the conditions in the planning as well.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Chair, can I just add as well that obviously from members' perspective, you have to come to, it's the policy. The current policy doesn't require net zero, so that is a massive benefit of the scheme. The current policy is far below that requirement, so just you need to bear that in mind when you're making your decision.
Do I have any further questions? Comments? Tony?
Yes, Chair, I take cognizance to what everybody is saying about city centre living and I understand. And as Lucy has already said, everyone's important to this city wherever they live. But unfortunately, we have a city here and we need to attract businesses into the city. And the only way to do that is by providing office space for them. Unfortunately, we haven't got the area, the density area to go outwards. So the only way to accommodate that is upwards. And I think that is the crux of the matter here. And I think on balance, I would go with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Tony. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. There is no doubt that as a design, it more than matches our expectations. There is a downside for some of the residents living nearby, but we are talking about a city centre here and not the outer parts of the city. Having been round the building yesterday and seen it from from the courtyard side, there's a lot of clutter. There's a lot of stuff that past, it's used by date. And it's for people living opposite, they're looking at a pretty messy site. And I yeah, I just cannot, I just cannot support the building staying as it is. I do think that this is an improvement on the previous application. And on balance, I'm minded to support it, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Any further comments? Brian?
Yeah, I'm taking some awareness of the objections from Historic England on poor quality design, from the Statutory Conservation Advisory Group, from three city councillors, from the 40 residents and possibly more, who would have been here if they'd been appropriately consulted and notified in the meeting. So I am taking notice of those. What I am concerned about is that there is still an impact on the setting of the heritage buildings in the area and within the conservation area. There's still overbearing, there's still poor light levels, and so I will be voting against this application.
Thank you, Ryan. No further. Barbara?
It's really a quick comment. Can I just say that people in the suburbs are equally affected sometimes by overbearing developments and loss of light. It's a common occurrence, it's not just restricted to people in the city centre. So I just don't want this division between, you know, city and outsides, it's just not fair. But yeah, I agree with our councillor chaplain, having been to the site yesterday, it's a horrendous mishmash. And I'm not so sure that sort of, you know, your implied criticism that sort of the building that exists there should be saved could be because it's so out of keeping with its surroundings. And I do think that what is proposed is an improvement and an improvement on the seven-storey original, which I really didn't like.
Thank you, Barbara. Any further comments? No, we'll move to the vote then. Brian?
Yes, as I implied, I will be voting against the offer's recommendation on this building.
Mike?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Tony?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Tony?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Nigga?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Audrey?
For the recommendation.
Barbara?
For the recommendation.
Chris?
For the recommendation, Chair.
That's passed, thank you.
Do you want to do the comfort break? I, I, I'm just, I'm quite happy to go for a comfort break with the people that sat here since two o'clock. Do that, yeah. Right, the next application is item, item nine F. Application number twenty-two, zero, zero, four, nine, one. Outline nine to eleven Woodroyd Road, Sheffield. Which is on page one hundred and fifty-seven of the agenda. So perhaps you could speak down now, please.
Thank you Chair, I'll go as quick as I can. First of all, can I just point you in the direction of the supplementary report, item number three? Just to notify you of the one additional letter of representation received from Solicitors Act on behalf of the owners of number fifteen, Woodroyd Road. The letter revisits matters relating to the ownership of the land in front of number fifteen, and that's considered in some detail in the committee's report, so we don't repeat that here. And then there's just three corrections in terms of the listed conditions that are proposed. Condition number sixteen, the reason for this condition referred wrongly to paragraph one seventy of the MPPF, and it should have referred to paragraph one seven four, so that will be corrected. Condition number twenty-one was attached in error, as there are no public sewers within the site. It relates to no obstructions within four metres of a public sewer, but there aren't any, so we've omitted that one. And condition number twenty-two, that's just to inform you of some renumbering of, of conditions because the wording of condition number twenty-two should have followed number condition eighteen because it refers back to the detail of that condition. So that's the supplementary report. Just trying to work this. So, this applicant, application seeks outline planning permission for up to forty-one dwellings with all matters reserved except for access. Members will recall that planning permission was previously refused for the same scheme, largely the same scheme in February twenty twenty-one, for three reasons relating to impact on the development on a non-designated heritage asset in the visual amenities of the area, impact on the natural environment through the loss of land considered to be of high biodiversity value, and impact on pedestrian safety and the free and safe flow of traffic on Woodroyd Road. They're condensed versions of the, the previous reasons for refusal. So the site is located to the east of Woodroyd Road in Deep Car. It com- Oh yeah, it comprises of a late eighteenth-century linear farmstead, which is a non-designated heritage asset. Which is farm buildings of this type are not rare, indeed they are the most common farm type in the Peak District and, and most likely the Deep Car area. The heritage interest and significance of the site is at the lower end of the spectrum of non-designated heritage assets. In this aerial image, you can see the boundary of the application's site identified in red, with the farm buildings to the west adjacent to Woodroyd Road. From here, from Woodroyd Road, the land slopes steeply to, slopes steeply down to the north, east and south. The western side of the site, that's sort of, if you, if you sort of take, if you strike a line down effectively the middle, following that wall in the centre of the site. The western side of the site lies within a designated housing area and the eastern side within an open space area. You can see from this image that the, that housing surrounds the site to the north, to the north-east and to the west. And you've got Fox Glen Wood Local Wildlife Site running along much of this southern boundary, beyond which you can see an industrial site known as Glen Works, which is accessed from Car Lane. Okay, in these photographs, top of the page, we've got a photo looking back at the farmhouse towards Woodroyd Road with the, the former garden in the foreground. And at the bottom of the site, that's a photo taken from the site entrance looking south along Woodroyd Road. And you can just see number fifteen there on the, on the left. The photograph at the top of the page is again taken from the site entrance and this town looking north along Woodroyd Road. And you can see in that photograph that the footpath on, on the eastern side of Woodroyd Road fizzles out at that point, next to the farmhouse. And at the bottom, this is a photograph looking back at the farmhouse. You can see in the centre of the picture with the two chimneys, that's the farmhouse and the site entrance just in front of that. And that's taken from the junction of Woodroyd Road and Armitage Road. At the top of this page, we've got a view of the existing site entrance taken from the opposite side of Woodroyd Road. And you can see the farmhouse or part of it on the, the left and at number fifteen on the right-hand side. And at the bottom of the site, there's some of the existing outbuildings, farm, art outbuildings on the site, twentieth-century farm buildings. These are few, views across the field looking, at the top of the page, this is looking north-east. And the bottom of the page, that's looking south-west with the edge of Fox Glen on the right-hand side of the, the bottom photograph, that line of trees there. And these photographs, they are, this is a view sort of from the, towards the eastern side of the site, looking back up the hill, looking south-west. At the top of the page, that's looking south-west with the trees of Fox Glen on the left. And one of the bottom pages, looking back at the hill towards the farmhouse itself and the outbuildings. And we've got more photographs of the southern site boundary again, featuring some of the trees of Fox Glen. And you can see through the trees where, where the local wildlife site narrows at that point. You can see the industrial site through those trees. And this is just a wider aerial shot image to give you a little bit more context. You can see the application site kind of top and centre. And it's actually very close to the centre of Deep Car and Manchester Road. You can't quite make that out on there, but it's, it's less than a hundred metres from the northern tip of the site to, to Manchester Road, which runs through Deep Car and on to Stocks Bridge. And this is a view looking back towards the site, actually from the opposite side of the valley. There are views of the, the site from the opposite side of the valley, they're mainly from, from public footpaths because there aren't that many roads directly opposite, high up on the, the side of the valley. This is taken from the slip road from the bypass down to Fox Valley. You can actually see it as you're driving along the Stocks Bridge bypass, if you're a passenger. Yeah, and, and you can see it from, from some of the footpaths, as I said, on the other side of the valley.
Chair, is it to the left of the tree?
Yes, it's to the left of the tree. If you, if you've got the tree in the middle, sorry, and then the, the, the patch of green to the left of the tree is, is, is part of the site. Okay, the contour lines on this topographical map give you an indication of the change in level across the site. The lowest section of the site is actually about seventeen and a half metres below Woodroyd Road. It does slope quite steeply down to the east. This plan also identifies the small number of existing trees within the site. Most of the trees are, are on the boundary. There's a couple of sort of blobs in the middle coloured in grey, which are existing trees, but they're category C trees within the centre of the site. Here we have an indicative site plan showing the, the new access roads, the sort of public open and green spaces that run through the centre of the site and down the east and southern boundaries. The blue dotted points at the north-east and southern edges of the site, they indicate the proposed attenuation basins which form part of the site's drainage strategy. And you can also see in there, on the southern side, the hatched areas, that's the, there'd be a fifteen-metre buffer to the local wildlife site. A minimum of a fifteen-metre buffer, actually, as you, as you move around the site to the east, that, that does increase in, in, in quite significantly. In this slide, you can see the retained farmhouse and barn. So as part of the proposals, which I'll go on to explain in a little bit more detail, there are some demolitions which include demolitions of the later extensions, particularly to the rear and eastern side of the property. But also it includes taking off a section of the western end of the farmhouse, that, that gable, in order to facilitate the improved access arrangement and ensure satisfactory visibility displays. And this is, shows a site entrance in elevation, the farmhouse on the left. Again, you can see the dotted line showing the, the sort of area of the gable and nearest the road that would be removed. And the farm, the, the existing stone wall would be rebuilt. And a footpath created along the whole of that site frontage. That, the footpath would end at the site frontage because, but, but it is an improvement nevertheless for pedestrians. And you can see that in a little bit more detail on this site plan. So that is the proposed site access arrangement. You've got a five-point-five-metre-wide access road with a two-metre-wide footway on either side. And as you can see, that extends along the full extent of the site frontage to the west. You've got the required inter-visibility displays. Number fifteen is on the right-hand side and there's, as, as noted in the report, concern from the neighbours that the, that the angle, that, that, so that the, the, that in order to achieve that sort of, sort of circumference or part circumference on the, on the, the footpath there, it takes in some of their land. But as you'll have read in the committee's report and perhaps as, as Mark may be able to explain a little bit later to you, that is, it, it's public highway that has been maintained as such for, for more than twenty years. And while the owner of number fifteen may own the land beneath the public highway, it's generally accepted, well, it is accepted that the, the foot, the, the the highway itself, the, over which the public traverse, is, is maintained at the public highway expense. And in its appropriate for, for us to be able to use that to create the required inter-visibility displays. And the final two slides feature site sections. And they illustrate the sloping topography of the site again, with Woodroyd Road on the high land to the west. I would like to say a bit more, I think we'll just go back to the plan. I mean, members, a reminder that at the time of the last planning application that was refused in February twenty twenty-one, the council had a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites. And so the most important development plan policies for determining the application were not automatically out of date. However, the council is currently unable to demonstrate a five-year supply of housing. And therefore, the most important policies in this case are now considered to be out of date. Unlike the last application, the tilted balance is triggered. And the MPPF is clear that planning permission should be granted unless any adverse impacts would significantly and demonstrably outweigh, outweigh the benefits. To address the previous reasons for refusal, the applicant has carried out additional surveys and amended the proposals to seek improved visibility and pedestrian movement at the site entrance. Officers have then carried out a balancing exercise to consider the adverse impacts and the benefits of the scheme and the weight that should be attributed to each of them. And I'm going to pick up on some of those in the report's conclusions. So, as part of the balancing exercise, officers have identified a number of negative aspects. And they include demolition of part of the farmhouse and loss of the pastoral fields that would result, result in some harm to the significance of a non-designated heritage asset at the low end of the spectrum of designated heritage assets. The harm, however, is considered to be less than substantial and should carry only moderate weight. The development will result in the loss of an area of land that is designated as an open space area. But this can only be given limited weight as the land does not have an open space function beyond its visual amenity. And it would not therefore comply with the MPPF definition of open space. There would be a narrowing of the area's green network. But again, this should only be given limited weight as a, as a minimum fifteen-metre-wide landscape buffer would be, would be provided. And between the development and Fox Glen Local Wildlife Site. And that's in line with Natural England's standing advice, thus limiting any impact on the green network. There would be increased vehicle movements along Woodroyd Road and the loss of on-street parking. However, it's considered that any harm to the highway network would be low as the likely increase in vehicle movements resulting from the development would not be significant. We've identified a potential risk of flooding through the partial loss of open grassland. However, the Environment Agency and the lead local flood authority have raised no objection to the development from a flood risk perspective. And a sustainable drainage scheme is proposed to manage the movement of surface water through, surface water through the site. There may be increased noise disturbance from vehicles egressing, ingressing the site that could lead to some disam- disamunity to neighbouring properties, in particular number fifteen. However, as described in the report, a distance of approximately seven metres will be maintained between the side elevation of number fifteen and the nearest part of the vehicle access, which together with appropriate acoustic boundary treatment and our planting, should prevent any significant noise disturbance over and above that's already experienced from traffic on Woodroyd Road. Any harm to neighbouring properties, residential amenity is considered to be low and therefore carries limited weight. In terms of the positive aspects of the scheme, we have the provision of up to forty-one houses. And significant weight should be given to this benefit in the context of the MPPF requirement to significantly boost the supply of new homes, particularly at a time when the council is, is only able to demonstrate a four-year supply of deliverable housing sites. We have the creation of employment opportunities through the construction process, to which some weight should be given. Benefits to the local economy as a result of increased spending by future residents, to which some weight should be given. The provision of a policy-compliant level of affordable housing, that's ten percent, which is given moderate to significant weight. A commitment to good design and the use of materials which are characteristic of the local area. Good design is a key aspect of sustainable development and should be given moderate to significant weight. Retention of most of the farmhouse and barn, which will continue to contribute towards the streets seen on Woodroyd Road, again, to which some weight should be given. The provision of a policy-compliant level of predicted energy needs from decentralised and renewable or low-carbon energy, again, which is given moderate to significant weight. And remediation of the site from previous coal mining activities, again, which some weight should be given. And remediation of the site from previous coal mining activities, again, which some weight should be given. Improved sightlines at the site access, site entrance, sorry, and an improved pedestrian crossing facility on Woodroyd Road. Opportunity, the opportunity to enhance the site's biodiversity by up to 22% in habitat units and 100% in hedgerow units, which would exceed the minimum requirement of biodiversity net gain by 11%. And it should be noted that the updated BAT survey report found no bat roosts. And the development does not impact negatively on protected species or habitats, but it does offer significant opportunities for enhancement. And again, that should be given moderate to significant weight. In addition, I think, well, I think it's perhaps just worth reminding you, although I think I've already said this, sorry, that part of the site is actually situated within a housing area where housing is the preferred use of land. And again, another reminder that the application site is used as grazing land. It's not accessible to the public. The site's value to the local community is limited to visual amenity afforded by its open character and appearance. And the land does not meet the required function of open space as set out in the MPPF. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We have a number of speakers, so I'd like to invite the first one, Adam Tim. You have up to five minutes, Adam.
Hi, I'm Admiral Number 15. We are here today to discuss the planning application for Woodroyd Farm. As we know, this application to build on this site has been submitted before and being rejected. The new planning application has changed very little compared to the previous one. What they have changed with the application is an attempt to deal with pedestrian safety, which in doing so not only acknowledges that this is a dangerous road, but that the new proposals are even more dangerous. What they have done now is widen the entrance to the site. This however would make it more dangerous for pedestrians and drivers as it would bring the entrance closer to Armitage Road, which is already a hazardous junction. But not only is winding the entrance unsafe, it is illegal. As you can see from my surveys report, it clearly breaches my boundary. This is a land, land registry, which dotted line, that's public footpath. This is not a dotted line. This is not footpath. Again, surveys report. And this would be illegal under common law law of trespass. It is also illegal under Article One of the First Protocol Protection of Property. I would be hindered in the use of my driveway and garage. As you can see here, my silver van would, and the new proposals sticking out into the middle of the road. I wouldn't be able to park there and neither would the residents on this side. They need access to their homes. And as you can see, the view from Armitage Road is very, very limited. Finally, Section 65 of the 1990 Act. This diagram is what DLP are basing the planning application on. Not only do I have overwhelming evidence that this diagram is false and misleading, we now have confirmation via email, thanks to the Highways Agency. On the new altered planning application that dropped recently, page 27, they have stated that this, the statement that they have made about whether it be the adoption of land or the fact that the public have used it for over 25 years, that is a blatant lie, one of many, like the distance between the new junction and Armitage Road. We have witness statements from previous owners, neighbours that have been there for over 40 to 60 years, who have stated that this has never been used as a public footpath. Letters from the Highways Agency acknowledging multiple times that this is a private land and photographic evidence that shows that this land has not been maintained or touched at all until they illegally tarmac it in 2016. Not only is this legal case still ongoing, as Dina has just said with my solicitor. The last email that we received was confirmation of this being a false document by the Highways. The next thing we know is, once we got the email, the next thing we know is this meeting was being confirmed despite, again, the email acknowledging that this is a false document.
Your five minutes are nearly up, Adam.
Yeah, and under Section 65 of the Town and Planning Act 1990s is offence to issue a false ownership certificate knowingly or recklessly. Furthermore, a person who makes a false or misleading statement in connection with the planning application, knowing that it was or might be untrue or misleading with the intent to make gain for themselves, may be prosecuted under the Fraud Act 2006. This is one of many false and misleading statements in this application, as you will find out from the rest of the group. I ask you that you outright reject this planning application on this basis. Or at the very least postpone it until the legal matters are dealt with.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Anderson, please. If you want to go together, but you'll slowly get five minutes. Oh, Julie, that's fine.
Julie Brayley, resident of Woodroyd Road, talking about access and local highway safety issues. The resubmitted application and officer reports do not address the concerns expressed by myself and other residents regarding first, the issues relating to the distance between the new junction and Armitage Road and the dangers of placing a crossing point here. And second, the negative impact due to loss of parking on a residential road that is already struggling with a lack of parking space for existing residents. The application and officer reports support the significant loss of on-street parking, which is needed by families, the elderly and those with mobility issues. Most houses on Woodroyd Road opposite the site do not have off-road parking options. This results in a solid row of parked cars all the way down to the brow of the hill and beyond. This in effect makes the road a single track and very frequently means that drivers going down the hill meet cars coming up the hill and have to reverse all the way back to the hazardous Armitage Road junction. Parking of vehicles has recently become more difficult as previously empty properties adjacent to the site's access point have now become occupied by residents with multiple vehicles to park. The current speed limit on Woodroyd Road is 30 miles per hour. The transport statement prepared by the Sustainable Development and Delivery Team, part of DLP Planning Limited, uses data obtained by an ATC carried out in November 2021. It states that the average speed travelling up the hill is 27 miles per hour and cars travelling downhill, the average speed is 24 miles per hour. Information that was admitted from the officer reports. But if these are the averages, what is the top speed that cars are travelling? Cars turning right out of the proposed access road will have to travel on the wrong side of the road due to the parked cars and would potentially be meeting another vehicle travelling at a speed in excess of 30 miles per hour. The recent changes to public transport in the area, including the cancellation of the Supertram link service, has left the area with an extremely poor bus service. Residents will therefore be forced to use their cars, thus increasing the number of vehicles using Woodroyd Road as a link between Deep Car and Stockbridge. The transport statement is keen to encourage other sustainable forms of travel, including walking. Pedestrians turning left out of the development would be using a footpath that officers state has been in regular use by the general public for at least 25 years. My husband has lived opposite the property for 63 years and can attest that it has never been used as a footpath due to parked cars and because it doesn't go anywhere. The creation of a crossing point using dropped curbs and the late amendment by council officers of removing the bollards and replacing with double yellow lines would restrict existing residents from parking on land in front of their properties and is an amendment that residents have not had the opportunity to comment on. The safety of pedestrians is still compromised in the submitted proposal and officer reports as pedestrians using the crossing point to re-enter the development would be stepping out from behind parked cars on the west side. Pedestrians crossing the road would have to safely navigate fast-moving vehicles and parked cars whilst also watching out for traffic emerging from two junctions. The resubmitted proposal is looking to deliver family housing. This would mean that most of those pedestrians crossing to and from the development would be families, which would include those with young children and pushchairs. I believe that these families would be cut in hazardous situations by the proposed arrangements. This resubmitted outline planning application-
Julie, your time's up now, thank you.
I've just got one more paragraph.
Go on.
Okay. Does not address the concerns that led to it being rejected by councillors in February 2021. It does not add anything to the area and will have a negative impact upon Woodroyd Road. How many existing residents will struggle to park their cars and will be forced to park in the new development or on the already congested Armitage Road, which is a bus route? Therefore, I urge the planning committee to reject this application.
Are you not speaking Jenny? You only do one last? Yeah. So it's now more, please, Mark Whittaker.
Hello, my name's Mark Whittaker. I'm Stockbridge Town councillor for Deep Car Ward. I live on Car Road, not far from the proposed development. I'm a frequent user of Woodroyd Road as I regularly pick up my two grandchildren from St John's Junior and Deep Car Infant Schools and deliver them to my daughter and her husband's house on Fox Glen Road. We do this either by car or by foot, depending on the weather. When we walk, it is difficult to get across Car Road into Woodroyd Road because of traffic. Once on Woodroyd Road, I have the worry of my grandchildren stepping off the pavement to get round slower pedestrians and into the near continuous stream of traffic at that time. When driving, I have the difficulty of negotiating the traffic to get round the corner into Armitage Road. When the buses from the frequent local services come out of Armitage Road onto Woodroyd, they block both roads completely because the turn is narrow, especially as there are usually cars parked all along one side. Those of us who know the road well will stop well in advance when we see a bus to allow it time and space to manoeuvre. People who are driving through to Stockbridge from Car Road and may not know this spot intimately invariably stop too late. When this happens, cars begin reversing and mounting pavements, causing confusion to both drivers and pedestrians. If a bin lorry or other large vehicle coincides with a bus coming the other way, then it is not unknown for people to have to get out of their cars to wave back reversing vehicles. There is simply no room for an extra junction, unloading yet more cars into what is already a chaotic situation. Furthermore, an extra 41 houses of the proposed development would have to be served by delivery vehicles and bin lorries, not to mention ambulances and fire engines. I can imagine fire engines being unable to negotiate entry with any speed. On return from dropping off my grandchildren, I retrace my steps and come back to the difficult junction where buses have problems. Even though my car is small, getting back out onto Woodroyd Road is difficult. The problem is that whereas bus drivers can see overparked cars, the road to my left is completely blind. Cars are parked here by necessity as the houses have no off-road parking. There is effectively a blind hill summit. Cars unfamiliar with the difficulties of getting out of Armitage Road onto Woodroyd come up the hill rapidly, cutting through to Car Road. I have to edge out of Armitage Road bit by bit, frequently having to brake suddenly as an unseen car speeds towards me over the blind summit. To add more cars through another junction is simply dangerous and absurd. Forty-one houses on the proposed development could easily mean an additional 80 cars a day using this junction. There is then the question of the general traffic load in the area. Much of the extra traffic from the development would disgorge out onto where I live on Car Road. The bottom of Car Road does not join directly onto the traffic lights of Manchester Road. There is a continuous line of cars waiting at the traffic lights. This means that queuing cars on Car Road have to wait to be waved out one at a time by courteous drivers. The result is that cars and buses are already queued back up Car Road, past the windows of my house, with all the pollution and noise that entails. Again, an extra 80 cars in rush hour are untenable. Some houses towards the bottom of Car Road have no off-road parking, further limiting the traffic flow. Cars often mount the pavement outside our house where no cars park. Our next door neighbour, who has two children, will not allow them to use the exit of his house without supervision for fear of these cars mounting a pavement. Extra traffic from the proposed development would make this worse. Accepting this-
Mark, we've had you five minutes now, thank you.
Last sentence, accepting this planning application would, in my opinion, be seriously detrimental to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We now have councillor Lewis Chin Chen, please. Lewis, can you just turn the other mic off, please?
Thank you Chair and thank you Committee. Yes, Lewis Chin Chen, City councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward. Flooding is a major issue across the city, but it is a particular problem in Deep Car because of the topography of the valley. In fact, Woodroyd Road is somewhere that floods frequently, forcing Amy to install temporary pumps during periods of heavy rainfall. And in November 2019, nine properties on Woodroyd Road were flooded. And the cause of this is the condition of the culvert under Fox Glen Playground and which runs adjacent to the proposed site. The Environment Agency has classed its condition as very poor, which is partly because the culvert is at risk of collapsing. Despite being identified by the Environment Agency as infrastructure that is in need of repair, the problem remains and will likely not be rectified for several more years. But it's not just the poor condition of the culvert. Tarmacking over a green space on the side of a steep valley is clearly going to increase flood risk elsewhere, flood risk elsewhere, most notably on Haywood Lane and Manchester Road, which lie below the site. The National Planning Policy Framework makes clear in paragraph one-five-nine and one-six-seven that the flood risk should not be increased elsewhere. At present, the space acts as a crucial natural absorber of water running downhill, something that will become even more important now that Hollingbusk is further up the valley, is to be developed, leading to a greater volume of water flowing down Clough Dyke. And it should also be pointed out that Woodroyd Road is a much steeper site than Hollingbusk, so the risk of surface water runoff is greater. In addition to these risks, there is currently a surface water overland flow path that crosses the site, so developing the site could increase flood risk by increasing the rate of this surface water runoff. Discharging surface water runoff to the existing watercourse downstream is difficult due to third-party land issues. It is also noted that in two thousand and seven, there was flooding where Clough Dyke meets the Little Don, indicating potential risks in adding yet more water to the watercourse. The flood risk assessment and drainage strategy therefore talks about pumping surface water back up to the existing surface water sewer on Woodroyd Road, which is indicative of the scale of the problem. The cumulative impact of flooding must be considered according to the MPPF. The more we develop green spaces and natural sponges of rainwater like these, the more we increase the local flood risk. The last time a planning application was rejected for this area of land in February twenty-twenty-one, Hollingbusk had not yet been granted outline planning permission, but it has now, and so the risk of flooding is even greater than it was then. One neighbouring resident has also told me that there are natural springs that run underneath the fields on the site and that they regularly have to deal with water coming into their cellar. For these reasons and the issues that local residents and other councillors have and will speak about, this application should be rejected because the adverse impacts of granting permission would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits, contrary to paragraph eleven D of the MPPF. Woodroyd Road is also crucially not included in Sheffield's recently published draft local plan. I must ask why planning officers made the decision not to include it, particularly when the other end of Hollingbusk, that does not yet have planning permission, has been included? Although the plan has not yet been finalised, sufficient weight should be given to emerging plans. And in response to the comments earlier about Sheffield's local plan being in a relatively early stage, I would say that the applicant has relied themselves on this emerging plan, and the question still remains as to why officers made a conscious decision not to include this site in the draft plan. And therefore, I would recommend to the committee that they refuse this application today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lewis. Jenny, if you would like to take a seat, please. You'll need that in front of you. And if you press the button to the right.
Welcome to Sheffield. The website rightly describes our city as being the UK's greenest when nature and culture intertwine. How long is this likely to be the case? Instead of actually being decades late, as in deforestation, we've both an opportunity and a collective responsibility to secure what is important to our unique and local community in a holistic way. Using our full range of resources to embrace the essence and sentiment of our plans, local or not so, even if they are a little bit outdated, we can expect to make good planning decisions within a democratic framework that promote biodiversity, preserve our local heritage and the green spaces which define our locality, and of course, sustain us and our wildlife partners. The local, the draft local plan covering twenty-twenty-two to thirty-nine is work in progress, but clearly demonstrates how the city aims to meet its targets, and all without even mentioning the proposed development on Woodroyd Road. Proposal document that separates us from our humanistic nature can mislead us. It can encourage us to lose our sensitivity in the decision-making process by channeling our attention towards specifics, rather than being able to fully consider the hidden or unintended consequences. And in this way, it's easy for potential evidence to be labelled as insignificant. Objections raised by individuals might not be fully addressed, put aside, summarily It's easier when it's faceless. Concerns, for example, that the building two or three-storey houses and planting additional trays will restrict the daylight of residents on Haywood Lane have not been addressed. And why is that? Other developments, it's been a factor, not a mention. The landscape, township and visual appraisal describes us as mere visual receptors. Yeah, that's you and me. It categorises the farm buildings, which have been part of the local built heritage for at least hundred-and-seventy years, as of little interest or significance. This is despite the fact that they're the very reason the road exists and that they lie within an area of special character. Attempts to remodel them would certainly harm the special character of this area overnight. Photos in the appraisal, taken from various but not all viewpoints, rather than demonstrating its insignificance as a landscape, showcase the uniqueness of the remaining green space and how it contributes to a sense of openness which is appreciated from both sides of the valley. It's widely recognised that there's a need for holistic approach when it comes to managing and preventing poor mental health. Research highlights the value of social prescribing and calls for more local green spaces. Mental health practitioners describe how taking time to reflect on and in our natural surroundings is beneficial for mental health and wellbeing, and acknowledges that the visual impact can be as important as the actual physical experience. And considering that at least seventy-five per cent of all of us will struggle with poor mental health, it's an issue most of us are going to face personally. But let's look at sustaining and promoting biodiversity at the site, but preferably without killing off the stuff that's already there. The bats area reports, partly referenced but not publicly available to my knowledge, confirms that at least three types of bats and one unidentified use the opening land, the open land for foraging and commuting, and the diagram that provides-
Jenny, thank you, your five minutes are up now, thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, wildlife doesn't have a voice, but I hope you've heard.
Thank you. Tony, do you want to ask something?
No, just comments on the-.
Dan is good.
Sorry, Chair.
Got to the speaker, sorry, I'm missing you. Yeah, General Openness was in favour of the application. I'm very sorry about that.
Good afternoon, everybody, and it's a pleasure to be back at Planning Committee again, actually, in the flesh. So I want to raise a few comments, basically in support of this application. And I think for those of you who are familiar with what's been going on in this part of Sheffield, and certainly those who have been working in Sheffield for a number of years will certainly know the material change of circumstances which are particularly pertinent to this particular scheme. And the starting point is, we're all very well aware now, there is no five-year housing land supply in this city. That has been tested at two recent appeals and clearly significant weight is given to that particular matter. There is clearly a policy requirement to ensure that there is a presumption in favour of sustainable housing development. Equally, one thing that has been raised are delivery rates. Sheffield has failed again to actually get anywhere near its target of three thousand units per annum. In fact, last year, the figures were only about nineteen hundred, so again, it's a considerable under-provision of housing, which the city is looking to actually deliver. Clearly, we've heard a lot of comments from third parties, but one thing that is important is we actually provide housing for people in this city. And this scheme not only provides housing in a relatively modest number of forty-one, but also goes some way to delivering the affordable housing requirements, certainly a policy requirement there. Also, I'd refer my members of what's called Option Three. Members will remember actually approving this in February, March of this year, which fully supports the use of housing policy areas identified in the UDP, which half of this site is a housing policy area, but also utilising underused open space within the urban area, including underused agricultural land. This is clearly seen from the aerial photographs within the urban area of Deepcar and Stockbridge. It is effectively a landlocked site. You're also being alert to other similar areas of open space in your UDP, which have actually been approved, notably Hollingbusk, basically on the benefits of the five-year housing land supply coming forward. Again, that's an urban expansion into the, from Stockbridge and Deepcar, not an urban containment. And we've heard a little bit today, finally, about the draft local plan. Clearly, that is very, very early in its clear formulation, and the weight to be afforded that is limited. But again, I'll reiterate, this site is a housing policy area and local local spaces in your emerging local plan. So again, the principles are fundamentally the same as they are now, acceptable. So just in terms of the reasons for refusal from last year, February two thousand and twenty-one, further work has been conducted, in particular, a detailed highway survey has been undertaken, a seven-day survey, twenty-four-seven in November, a time when we're outside the Covid restrictions, a time when we're outside of actual school holidays. This is a very accurate industry standard test, and it's quite evident there is no evidence of any severe harm. Your highway officer will advise you that the test of impact on highways is severity, as included in paragraph one-one-one of the MPPF. Clearly, the access arrangements meet the council standards in terms of gradient visibility, and it will all be undertaken within the adopted highway. There may be a civil issue that's being raised, but it's not a planning issue, and certainly our evidence indicates that the actual access is within the adoptable highway. There are benefits to the highway in terms of the footpath provision that's actually been put to the frontage, which allows residents to cross onto the opposite side of the highway, which is also a benefit over above what's currently there. In terms of green corridors, this was an area of concern last time round, but you'll see from the plan that there's a green corridor being provided on the southern-eastern boundaries, bearing in mind it's about from fifteen metres to about forty-five metres. This is entirely in accordance with your own local plan policies and identified in the core strategy as being a green link which is required. It is a generous green link and it runs along those boundaries. Equally, there are two further green corridors incorporated into the fabric of this scheme over and above what is actually required in policy terms, so there's certainly significant benefits. We've heard about the environment on here. We've had significant surveys carried out by independent ecologists, and certainly there are no evidence of any protected species on this site. Four independent surveys have been carried out over a period of time. Equally, biodiversity net gain on this site is also something we've taken into account and very seriously taken into account. There's going to be an eleven per cent biodiversity net gain. You have no policies on that, but certainly the Emerging Environmental Act, in terms of delivering this from November twenty-twenty-three, is looking at ten per cent. We're ahead of the game here, we're actually delivering a biodiversity net gain on the site. As far as heritage asset is concerned, we've looked at that in great detail. We're not knocking down all of the building, we're taking proportion of that building away, and certainly the best part of the building is actually going to be retained. That building has been assessed by your own South Yorkshire Archaeological Services, who've indicated that the harm to that particular building is deemed less than substantial. That is a very, very low parameter, and certainly, as Dinah Hope has already suggested to you, it's at the lower end of the spectrum on a non-designated heritage asset. It's not listed, it's not in a conservation area. We've also carried out geophysical surveys of the site, which have actually recorded nothing of any particular significance on the site. Landscape character was an area of concern. I'm sorry, Chair, I'll try and hurry up. Landscape character is also an area of concern, and this has also been looked at in significant detail independently, undertaking industry standards.
You've had your five minutes now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair. I will pass over to Mark in a minute, because there were a lot of highway-related issues raised there, and we'll just try and pick up on a few of the other matters. Flooding, flooding on Woodroyd Road was mentioned, and, you know, the understanding is that that actually originates upstream, I think, in part from the culvert and in part from the overland flow, and I don't, so that, it, we can't penalise the development for flooding that occurs upstream. The MPPF, you rightly said, councillor Chin Chen, requires development to not result in increased flooding elsewhere, largely downstream. The site, there is an overland flow that runs through the site. The site isn't a particularly good natural absorber of that overland flow because of the steep topography and because of the soil conditions. And actually, the drainage strategy could actually result in improvements to the control of that overland flow. It will all come out in the mix if permission is granted, and obviously there'll be a condition on there for further details of the drainage strategy. But the sub scheme to manage surface water would form three detention basins, as I showed you, as you can see on the plan there. And it also suggests that attenuation will be provided beneath the parking and private road areas using permeable block paving, and that surface water will be captured in this way, will be temporarily stored and treated in the sub base beneath the road before it's discharged to the next element of the strategy at a controlled rate. So, you know, there is potential to actually improve or to control flooding downstream or reduce the extent of flooding downstream. I think it's important just to remind members that, you know, as a local planning authority, we make decisions in accordance with the development plan and other material considerations, and part of that is national legislation, the National Planning Policy Framework, it's a starting point for all decision-makers. It can seem a bit clinical, but it is the way we make decisions, local policy, national And as I said at the beginning, that, paragraph eleven of the MPPF states that decision-makers must apply a presumption in favour of sustainable development, where the most important development plan policies for determining the application are out of date, and they are out of date in this instance because of the lack of a five-year housing land supply. So we do have to trigger the tilt and balance, and you do have to consider all the positives and all the adverse impacts of the development in your final decision-making. I think ecology, there was some reference to biodiversity and questions about the impacts that this development would have. The site comprises currently, the vast majority of it is neutral grassland and poor semi-improved grassland. That's grassland that's been improved in the past, usually by fertiliser. It has very low biodiversity, relatively low biodiversity value. There were no bat roos found on site or in the more recent nocturnal surveys, there were no other protected species. We have got a minimum of fifteen-metre buffer to the Fox Glen Woods, and as just pointed out there, that does extend to forty-five metres as you move around the site. The site is currently Grade Four, poor quality agricultural land, in another designation. There was also mention made of the relationship of the development with properties to the north and south, the extremities of the site there. It hasn't been picked up in a great deal because those privacy distances, there's distances between properties and the sort of intervening vegetation and changing level, it's far in excess of the distances we would normally expect. So there'd be no harmful impacts based on our local policies on the amenities of any of the neighbouring properties. I think I've picked up on most of those points. Just going back to drainage, again, the information submitted with the application and the assessment of the site actually stated that there's no evidence of any sources of water within the site boundary. I think that's worth mentioning. And I think at that point, I'm going to hand over to Mark, because there were quite a lot of highway-related matters raised.
Mark, if you would like to go into the highway issues, please.
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Yeah, I don't dispute any of the comments made by the objectors in terms of what they're experiencing on a daily basis, in terms of traffic movements, on-street parking. experiencing on a daily basis, in terms of traffic movements, on-street parking, crossing car road at busy times can be tricky, as we all know. I wouldn't agree, though, with some of the comments that have been made. And I accept that the objectors won't feel that the differences to the scheme, this revised scheme, go far enough, so that their objections will all still be valid in their eyes. And members of the board might also feel that the changes don't go far enough. But in terms of the differences between the last submission and this submission, it's mentioned that the access has moved, the proposed access has moved closer to number fifteen. When you overlay the two layouts, they're identical, there's been no movement at all between where the proposed access is now and where it was with the application that was refused. In terms of the geometry, the previous application had a five-and-a-half metre carriage way for the access road leading into the site from Woodroyd Road. The junction radii are the same, the two-metre footway are the same. So the only change really between what was before you last time and what's before you this time is the crossing of lowered curbs and tactile paving to assist people to cross the road there. In terms of going through some of the points that have been raised, the resident from number fifteen who spoke, that there is an ongoing dispute there, and I don't know if it's possible to go back to the photographs showing the road across the front of number fifteen, is it? Maybe it isn't, but that's the one. So the bottom photograph there shows, this is the dispute really. The council and my colleagues in highways records are of the view that the limit of adoption, highway adoption, goes back from the curb line that you can see to the end of the tarmac, and then where the tarmac becomes a mixture of different materials abutting the cottages of number fifteen, that's private forecourt. So that, I reckon, we contest that the adoption goes up to where the tarmac finishes. The resident of number fifteen contests this, and we've had letters from, and it's actually spelt out in the report on page one hundred and ninety-four, that they're contesting that the actual adoption of Woodroyd Road doesn't include the tarmac at all. It goes only to the curb line, and that essentially, that whole area of tarmac and the other surfacing you can see there, they contest that that's all private, that's their private forecourt, essentially. That's the difference, and we're not trying to hide anything, that is the difference. So we have letters from the occupant solicitors, and there is still ongoing communication there, still some discussion with our solicitors, but we stand by our records, that's our view. In terms of the junction arrangement and the rear of the footway where the radius goes around, it doesn't encroach at all into any of that material that isn't tarmac. So the radius that you see on the layout doesn't actually go into what we believe is the private forecourt elements of that frontage. And that's, I think, where we are with the, it's ongoing, it's a dispute between the council and the occupant of number fifteen. He mentioned the highways agency. I've not personally seen that correspondence, but I'm surprised. The highways agency normally deal with trunk roads, and clearly the Stocksbridge bypass was within their remit. It's rare for, I've never known highways agency get involved in residential estates and what's happening there, but if there's correspondence, there's correspondence, and I guess that will continue to be fed into the dispute until that's resolved. So that hasn't been resolved completely as things stand, but that's our view, that's the highway authority view, we don't feel there is any encroachment into third-party land. In terms of the bollards obstructing access to the garage of number fifteen, I can't understand why that was ever shown on a drawing, it's ridiculous. You can't compromise access to somebody's off-street car parking, that wouldn't be allowed to happen. Mention has been made of the WL lines coming in as an option late in the day and not being properly consulted on. It might not be WL lines, but there will be a full road safety audit at the end of the day. It might be that a mixture of bollards that don't impede access to the garage and no WL lines might be the upshot of the road safety audit, but the aim is to get pedestrians across the road there, and then again, across Armatis Road, where you've got, you can just see on the plan there, there's a, the radius of Armatis Road has a little triangle there, that's where you've got tactile paving to help people across Armatis Road. And from there, you've got a continuous footway to car road, and I don't dispute that it might not be a pleasant footpath to walk along if there's lots of people walking on it, it's busy with traffic. But again, on page one hundred and ninety-four, and as the speaker in favour of the application pointed out, that the traffic flows are there over a seven-day period, and you've got during the peak period, a hundred and forty-two-way movements, which isn't considered to be a high flow for residential streets of this nature. The generation from the development is anticipated to be in the order of twenty-one, I think, maybe slightly higher than that, but even so, against the background traffic that's there already, that's not a big increase in activity. I think a lot of the points that have been raised are historic issues that are there that you could probably cite those concerns about a lot of the streets in Deepcar and Stocksbridge, because the roads are quite characteristically narrow, they're a steep-sided valley. This development sits within an established residential area. Yeah, you've got bin lorries currently circulating that area, double-decker buses, I got the fifty-seven the other day for a site visit, just to see how easily it does actually manoeuvre and get around, in light of the fact that there's this application today that we're discussing, and other applications further along that are quite controversial, which, again, the fifty-seven bus passes quite close by. And it negotiates it, all of the junctions with all of the on-street parking, it's tight, it is a squeeze, sometimes traffic does drive on the, has to drive on the wrong side of the road to get past the parking, the on-street parking. I think there was one of the images earlier showed traffic approaching Woodside Road from Armatis Road, and a car parked quite close to that junction as you're looking right up the hill. And that's pretty similar to what the situation would be for the development site access looking towards car road. You'd be faced with traffic parked on-street quite close to the junction there. And that's a feature all over the city. The five-year accident record for Armatis Road at that junction is, and these are recorded personal injury accidents, so I'm sure there will be other situations where there might have been collisions or accidents that haven't resulted in personal injury, but there haven't been any personal injury accidents recorded at that junction or any length of Woodroyd Road from that junction to car road. So, yeah, there's on-street parking, and traffic has to weave through that on-street parking. It is a, if it ever happens, permission is granted, then, yeah, there'll be family housing, but there's also an existing playground off Woodroyd Road, where there's been no record of any children being injured at all crossing Woodroyd Road to get to that children's playground. So from a highway's perspective, in light of all of that, I mean, the vehicle speeds have been mentioned, the visibility displays that are shown on the drawing accord with thirty miles per hour speed limits in terms of stopping straight distances, I don't think I said that quite right. And they don't go, those visibility displays, in our view, don't cross any third-party land, but that's clearly been contested by the resident of number fifteen. So, yeah, I think a lot of what's been said is true, it's historical, it happens, and it happens probably all over Deepcar and Stocksbridge, but this development for the number of houses, it's a small number of houses in an already established residential area, so from the officer, highway officer view, it's not actually materially adversely impacting on the local highway network, except that won't be accepted by everyone here, but that's the officer view.
Thanks, Mark. I'm sorry, but the public don't have a right to speak at this stage, I'm sorry. You cannot speak, the public's had their chance to speak, if you needed to speak, put your name forward. So I'm sorry, you can't speak. Thank you. If you continue to speak, I'll ask you to leave the chamber. You are not allowed to speak. Thank you. Can we go to members' questions, please? Donny?
Yeah, I mean, I know as well as anybody the need for extra houses in the city and identifying sites, but I just can't convince myself that having built these properties, we'd be able to control the flooding, particularly with some of the extreme weather we're getting at the moment. So I'm minded at this stage to vote against, because I can't
Mike, it's questions, not comments.
Am I right to be concerned?
When we come to comments.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
Anybody got any questions?
Can I just say, strict with us as well, so, yeah.
Question, Dan?
Thank you, Chair. I will phrase this as a question. I have a particular concern about the risk of flooding in that area, and the officer was using words like about the attenuation that could be put in place underneath the roadways and parking areas and the attenuation pools. So I'm asking whether that would be enough, and I say that because yesterday, when we viewed the site, you could see a streamlet coming out of Woodroyd Road into the field, and there had been rain, but it wasn't particularly heavy rain, and I worry that if you've got rain that was much heavier than what we're experiencing at the moment, that it could cause problems further down the hill for people living in homes there.
Thanks, Mike. Dina?
The whole point is
Yeah, just a quick question, and it's quite a simple question. Is this a flood plain? Thank you.
Thanks, Dina.
Okay, I'll answer both those. No, it's in flood zone one, it's not a flood plain. So it's a large site at the least risk of flooding, because it's obviously high on the side of the valley. And the flooding that does, oh, sorry, the flooding issues that I suppose could potentially arise do all relate really to that overland flow, because there are no open watercourses on the site, there are actually no flood extents associated with Clough Dyke, there are no sewers, and there are no sources of groundwater within the actual site, and it is generally affected by surface water flooding. So you asked whether it would work, you know, drainage strategy, they've put forward a drainage strategy that the local flood authority thinks is an acceptable proposal. Yorkshire Water think it's an acceptable proposal, neither of them have any objections. The Environment Agency didn't have any objection to the proposal. We have to take it at face value, and it is possible to drain a site sustainably and to improve the flooding situation downstream. So, you know, my answer has to be that, yes, it's possible to drain it satisfactorily.
Yeah, you can come back, Donny.
Yeah, councillor Chin Chin mentioned a policy that says, one of our policies there, one of the policies that says that water drainage should not be moved somewhere else to obtain what you want to obtain. Thank you.
Yes, it's the MPPF that refers to a development not, I'm just getting the actual word. I don't know if I've got the actual words in front of me, actually. It shouldn't make flooding worse, you know, worse downstream, it shouldn't create flooding issues downstream, it shouldn't make the situation worse anywhere else. I mean, we can only consider what's downstream of the site, we can't consider what's going on upstream necessarily, because that, you know, the culvert that they have all the problems with is actually maintained by the Environment Agency, and it's their responsibility to deal with those issues, to reduce the impacts of the culvert onto Woodroyd Road. In terms, so the main issue for flooding in this case is that is surface water and that overland flow, and how that's dealt with, to reduce or to minimise any impacts downstream, and it should be possible through the use of a sustainable urban drainage scheme to do just that.
Barbara?
Yeah, I mean, my main comment was about flooding as well, because I raised it yesterday, and the fact that it is sort of, it was rather poor soil, which didn't seem to absorb well at all, and therefore to actually build houses on that without mitigating circumstances is really, really challenging. I mean, I have been aware of issues all over Sheffield just with that issue, and I'm not convinced that, I'm persuaded by what you say, but the other point is this tilted balance again. Now, Hollins Busk has been sort of approved, all right?
Again, Barbara, I have to ask, have you got a question? Because it's all questions at the moment, not on comments.
Right, no, sorry, yes, I mean, it was going to be a question about flooding, and it's sort of basically, because the soil is so poor, how can, or what confidence is there that it can be achieved to sort of be more absorbent with the houses on? And the second issue is the tilted balance. With Hollins Busk being now approved, does that have any significance? And I know that we're not allowed to consider the cumulative effect of things, but obviously, sort of Hollins Busk has got huge implications for this site as well. How much is that being allowed to be taken into account, flooding, traffic, and sort of, yeah, flooding and traffic and tilted balance? Thank you.
If I go back to flooding first, I think I just have to repeat what I've already said, which is that the MPPF requires a sustainable urban drainage scheme, and for the development not to sort of worsen flooding elsewhere, you know. And the applicants have put forward a scheme to manage surface water, and a scheme which Yorkshire Water and the lead local flood authority and the Environment Agency are all satisfied with. Now, the details of that scheme will come out, you know, would be submitted as part of a condition, but it incorporates not just the attenuation tanks, the detention tanks at the bottom of the hill, the three detention tanks, it also suggests other elements such as, I mean, you wouldn't be using the existing sort of soil to, you know, because it is relatively impenetrable. They also propose permeable block paving, where the surface water is captured by a subbase beneath the parking areas and the roads, and then it's stored there temporarily before it's then discharged to the next element of the strategy at a controlled rate. So at each stage, you can control the rate of the flow, you can store it, and you can control the rate of flow into the tanks, and then from the tanks into the final, you know, wherever you're discharging to eventually. So I can't really say any more than that.
You've actually addressed one of my main concerns there, when you said about, you know, the block paving and sort of subsurface collection, and I'll accept the reservations that we have, well, I'll accept that it's not a complete answer, but it will do, but it might be.
In terms of Hollins Busk, I'm not quite sure what you mean. Obviously, all material considerations need to be taken into account. Are you talking about Hollins Busk as a sort of of a planning decision that you have to sort of bear in mind when you're making a decision now, or the cumulative impacts of...?
It's the cumulative impact, because we always have this, don't we? Sort of, you know, everything is taken in isolation. And I quite accept the views in isolation. But when you think about developments close by, the cumulative impact is quite severe in certain locations. And I'm just wondering how much weighting that can be given in this instance.
I think because of the, I mean, because of the distance between the two sites, it'd be hard to know exactly what significant cumulative impact there would be. I mean, traffic on car, road possibly. But I don't see that there would be any other cumulative impacts.
No, I mean, it's all about services. I mean, I'm not that familiar with the whole area, you know, but sort of the local services, dentists, you know, things like schools.
Well, both schemes will be SIL liable, so they will be having to pay a community infrastructure levy. And it's those funds that would help to provide infrastructure, support new developments in the area. Neither scheme, I mean, this is a relatively small scheme, you've got to be in the region of 500, 1,000 units before it triggers a 106 agreement to pay a specific payment towards sort of education or health facilities. But in both cases, they will be SIL liable, and that SIL money is the money that's used to then improve infrastructure, such as health and education.
Well, that looks like we've only talked to comments because that wasn't a question. But still, so I've got, hopefully it's comments, I've got Tony, Mike, and then Roger. Have you had a question? Yeah, that's fine.
Can I take you down a trip down memory lane? Oh, at least an hour ago, anyway. I think that you mentioned that to the east was of that plan there was open spaces. Am I right in thinking that you said that? And then the houses were spread onto that land? Can you explain that clue?
I was referring, I think, to the Unity Development Plan Policy areas. So the western side of the site is designated in the UDP for housing. The eastern side of the site is about 40, 60%. The eastern side is designated as open space in the Unity Development Plan.
But it isn't open space, is it? It's going to, they're asking for outline planning permission on that land?
Yes, but an open space designation doesn't preclude development for housing, particularly when the nature of the open space doesn't accord with the definition of open space in the National Planning Policy Framework. And our policies are out of date because of the lack of a full year housing land supply. So the balance is...
I find that totally confusing. I must admit that we can have open space, but it doesn't have to be open. We can have buildings on it.
Yes, the policies, there are certain criteria. We have open space policies in the Unity Development Plan, and there are certain criteria that list what you can and can't do in those open space areas. It doesn't preclude development, particularly when those policies are out of date.
Are those policies out of date?
Yes, because we don't have a five-year housing land supply. And they are one of the most important policies in the determination of this application.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to remind members that previous decision to refuse is a material consideration. And obviously, I can't entirely recall what the flooding position was in respect of that application. But to my knowledge, it wasn't one of the reasons to refuse of the previous application. So in terms of it not being an issue with the last application, it may be useful for members to have a think about why they think the flood risk is an issue in this one. Obviously, in terms of any refusal here, what members need to be mindful of is that if they are minded to refuse for something such as flooding, what you will need to have is robust reasons for refusal that stand up to scrutiny. And I believe that the planning officer has set out all the different agencies and officers that have been involved in the flood risk here and what their advice is. So just to bear that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Tony?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm not reassured. I don't know deep car. Well, not very well, but I've got relatives who's there. And I just can't believe that with some of the really extreme weather we're getting at the moment, that we're able to contain the flooding. So I'm not reassured. I'm sorry, but I just can't resolve it in my mind. The other thing is, I think, 41 houses there, you could possibly have another 60-plus cars on the road in what is already difficult. So I fully appreciate we do need to find housing land, but not any land. It needs to be land that is going to be sustainable. And I just think we'll not contain the flooding. I'm doing my best to try and resolve the fact that we can, but I don't think we will be able to. And when the houses are built, it's too late.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Going back to questions, the legal status of the land at the junction of Woodroyd Road, the land that resident here today at number 15 claims that is his and that he has control over it. Does that have an impact on the planning application? And is there any possibility that the issue will be resolved legally, one way or the other?
Oh, no, you can't, no.
Vicky, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I understand there is an ongoing dispute about the land and whether it is highway or whether it is in the ownership of the objector. In terms of a planning application, you can actually make a planning application on somebody else's land. The only requirement is to serve the correct notices. In terms of broadly speaking, what those notices seek to do is that they seek to make sure that everybody's informed about the application and that nobody really is prejudiced by not receiving the correct notice. On this occasion, obviously, the homeowner concerned is aware of the application and has had the opportunity to object. So I would suggest, therefore, that the homeowner hasn't been prejudiced by potentially the wrong certificate being issued. Obviously, given council officers' advice that, in their opinion, it is highway, it would be remiss of us to consider really that the applicant has served the incorrect certificate knowingly because council officers are of the opinion that the correct certificate has been issued. So, no, there's nothing stopping a decision on this planning application being taken despite the fact that there is an ongoing dispute about the ownership of this part of the site. Thank you.
Vicky, you okay with that, Mike?
That answers that part. I've got concerns about that junction and how dangerous it has the potential to be, given that the pavement gives out on the other side. Is it possible to build into, were this to be, this planning application to be accepted, would it be possible to put in a condition about putting some traffic calming measures, maybe even a pedestrian crossing or two to make those roads safer?
Yeah.
Chair, I think there's already concern about if this were approved, the impact on lost-on-street parking. I think any more crossing locations is going to further impact on street parking. It'll take more street parking away. There will be a full road safety audit undertaken if this evolves into a detailed design, a detailed junction design, an independent road safety audit. And everything that that independent road safety auditor requests, the applicant is duty bound to try and address that best they can.
You okay with that, Mike?
Just one last point that an objector had raised, and it's not been answered, is to do with trees, if I heard correctly, that the houses on Haywood Lane would have loss of sunlight because once the trees are planted on this development, that they would... Is there any indication that that would have an impact on those neighbouring properties?
So Haywood Lane is at the top of the, at the northern end of the application site. So you can see the red line boundary where there are already a number of trees along that boundary. And you can see the distance of the houses away from the boundary. And then if I... And remembering that this is an indicative site plan. So although for all intents and purposes, development should, it is conditions, isn't it, an indicative site plan, but the details are yet to be sort of worked through in the reserve matters applications if it's granted. You can see that the properties and are some distance from the boundary, sufficient distance to comply with our supplementary planning guidance. And although some tree planting is shown there, I don't think it would have any greater impact than the trees that are there already. And, yeah, I mean, I don't think there will be any amenity impacts as a result of this development on the properties at Haywood Lane to the north.
Any more comments?
Brian?
Yes, I've got lots of unresolved questions, but we haven't had enough time to go through them all. So I'm probably going to abstain on this application. I just have not, there's such a wealth of detail from all sorts of different directions. I'm not able to pull it all together. That's my thoughts at the moment.
No, you can't, sorry. Do you want to ask a question, Brian?
There are details that are so involving about the width of the junction, which one of the residents asked about the width of the junction and what impact that was having, whether it was made it safer or it made it more dangerous, you know, depending on whether you're a car or a pedestrian, even a cyclist. Yeah, that was one of the questions. But that's not the whole picture. And there's such a lot of wealth of detail in here. And at the end, we have a comment that, you know, this is finally balanced. I find it extremely hard to make a decision.
All right, so no further comments or questions, right?
Chair, I'm just mindful that at least one of the members has said that they're finding the flood information difficult to believe or understand. One option is to obviously defer the matter and seek further advice from officers in respect of the flooding. And perhaps even invite one of the officers that deals with flooding to committee early stage to answer questions. I'm not sure if that is something that would assist members. And it's likely that the information they will provide would be what is already in the report. But nevertheless, it is an option for members who feel that they are struggling, particularly on that issue. Thank you.
Tony?
I think you're talking about me. But are you suggesting, then, that we defer a decision so that we can make a decision with other information and reassurance?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I'm not suggesting what should happen. I'm just advising on a range of options. It's just that at the moment, and the discussion that's been had so far, could lead to a suggestion that members may be inclined to refuse on the basis of not believing part of the report, if you like. I'm just suggesting that if there is part of the report that you think you want to hear from an officer with more detailed expertise on that matter, then that is something that the planning authority might be able to accommodate. I don't know whether Dina wants to come in and suggest whether that is something that she thinks would assist. But it's just I'm mindful that, you know, struggling to comprehend what's in the report and what the planning officer said in respect of flooding is something that could be further, potentially further looked at by officers with those expertise.
I wouldn't use the word believe because that tends to imply that I don't believe it. I just can't accept it. I think the conditions, and if you think it would help, I'd move that we defer a decision until we've had further information and reassurance. I don't know if anybody has taken that or seen.
Can I just let Dina come in first? That's on the table, right, then, fine. Yeah, it's been seconded. I mean, I've caught seconds all over the place. So can we take a vote on that, to defer?
Sorry, Chair. I just noted there that the planning officer did want to come back and provide some information. I'm just mindful of the fact that I've suggested we might be able to get an officer here to assist, whereas the planning officer might have more information on that, really. Thank you.
A good idea is a good idea, choose where it comes from.
Dina?
I just think it's worth, I think it's worth reminding members that, as Victoria said earlier, flooding wasn't a reason for refusal last time. So it would be a new reason that wasn't applied at the last time that this application came to committee because members at that point were satisfied that flooding could be dealt with through the appropriate, through the recommended conditions, were satisfied that a drainage, a sustainable drainage strategy could deal with the overland flow path across the site. And that both the Lead Local Flood Authority, that's the council's own drainage specialists, and Yorkshire Water, and the Environment Agency were in agreement with that and hadn't raised any objections to the scheme. So I'm not quite sure exactly what else we could offer apart from just repeating everything, you know, we've already said today.
Unfortunately, we've got a proposal.
Yeah, sorry to widen the issue, but I'm quite concerned about highways issues. I mean, when I visited yesterday, it kind of seemed okay. But that was the time of day. And I don't, from what I've heard, it doesn't sound very typical of what people have been experiencing. The traffic levels were really very low. And that doesn't sound typical. I mean, can we get more information on this?
And again, there's a very detailed traffic survey that was submitted with the application and is available to read, you know, is available for everybody members and has been consolidated in the officer report. And that's the basis on which we have to make a decision, the information that's available to us.
So, Barbara?
Thank you. I mean, when you say that flooding wasn't an issue before, I mean, sort of, when was it refused? January, February 2020? And when you think about, you know, the marked, obvious changes in sort of climates, well, weather patterns, I'll use that phrase, then maybe it is something that is worth revisiting in light of sort of new knowledge or understanding about the issues.
When I said it wasn't an issue, it was definitely an issue raised by objectors and members and was discussed at length at the last committee meeting. What I mean was it wasn't a reason for refusal, and it was considered that a solution could be found, but that the details would be conditioned.
But my argument still stays the same, sort of, you know, our understanding... But my argument still stays the same, sort of, you know, our understanding of sort of the changes in the intervening couple of years are quite marked, and therefore it might have a material effect on, it might sort of actually change the perceptions. That was held in the original refusal, that's all.
It was only last year, so it was beginning of 21, February 21. So, and it was, I think it was shortly after some very heavy flooding that it last came to committee. So, and I think flooding, to be fair, these issues are, you know, and I think a lot of the issues do stem from the culvert, and that's perhaps a different matter, but, yeah.
Thank you, you've got an answer for everything.
Do you want to come here, Roger?
I was going to make a comment, but I think my problem is also the amount of housing that could be on this site if we grant this outline planning, if we grant outline planning permission. And I think that on that basis, and I have no real ability to say that, to go against what the planning rules are, so I'm going to abstain.
We have a motion that's been seconded. No, no, yeah, so the motion is that we defer this, we defer the decision, and we ask Dana to get someone from floods or Yorkshire Water or whoever to come to the next meeting and so we can question them. So that's what's the proposal. Can I have a vote on that, please, just to show of hands? That's passed, thank you very much. So the decision on outline planning permission is deferred until after the meeting. Thank you.
Can I clarify one thing, Chair? At that meeting, it would have to be someone from the Leeds Local Flood Authority who worked for Sheffield City Council. Can I confirm that, are we opening up the whole scheme again, revisiting everything or are we just revisiting?
I think the problem we've got is with flooding.
It's what I was about to ask, sorry. Because what I was about to ask was actually there are unanswered questions that I have on highways, so that is another element which I think needs to be drawn in.
So I think the only officers that we need to ask to come in then, we may not go through a full, because we've already gone through a full, but we're talking about two issues. One is highways, which could just be raised, and the other one is flooding. So we need someone from flooding and perhaps at that time, someone from Mark's department to sit in just to answer some questions that didn't get answered today. Is that okay, Vicky?
Yeah, I believe members have already voted to defer for the flooding. I don't see any reason why we couldn't add highways to that matter. Obviously, we'd come, there would be questions and going to comment. I don't know whether all members have, obviously now, we'd need to revisit comments again at the deferred meeting.
If Brian's got a number of questions and we've deferred the meeting, would it be hopeful to everybody if he submitted them in writing prior to the meeting and then we can get, you know, we can get an answer to them? Brian would probably get...
That would be a good idea, Brian. That would save a lot of time.
Yep, remind me.
Can I withdraw that?
So next is, we have a record of planning appeal submissions, which is page two on five of the agenda. Is there anything that you need to bring to, Diana?
I think there're mainly appeals relating to delegated decisions to householder, ex-engine Doran, there's a telecommunications application that was dismissed. The one thing that might just be worth referencing is the appeal decision against enforcement notice relating to the unauthorized use of land in the green belt for storage of vehicles, plants, machinery and other materials, plus operational development, including buildings, hard surfaces, gates, screens, walls and foundations. Now, while the inspector found that some buildings were not in appropriate development and had minimal visual impact, the unauthorized use, a large storage building, gates and screens were inappropriate, and most parts of the appeal failed, and the enforcement notice was varied to take account of the acceptable elements, and that's the development on land at the junction of Long Lane and Hag Lane.
Thank you, so all of those are noted. Thank you very much, you're a long time. Thank you.